All right, do any of the board members have any additions, amendments, or deletions to the agenda? I'll entertain a motion to that it be, if there's no change. Need a second. All in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. All right, Brian Clark.
Please give us some good news.
Mr. Chairman, Paul Bryan's getting set up there. A couple of things. Bryan's going to go through some slides. I'm going to go through some slides as well. And so just a reminder to the board with the mics, when we want to speak, the system works when the light is on. You just have to push the button. And then when you don't want to speak, you push the button again. Because I know for our audience on the live stream, sometimes I forget to push my button sometimes, too. So, good to see everyone out this evening.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, for a work session today, we have a budget update. And so we kind of have some overview, and then we have some new information, some updated numbers, and of course, some possible strategies. And then the end of it, hopefully feedback from the members of the board on next steps, how we move forward for future work sessions and some decisions. Okay? So I'll arrow. Do you want to do this?
Yeah, thank you, Brian. As Brian noted, we thought it would be helpful, certainly for Mr. Quinn and Mr. Jamison, this afternoon, as we look to the budget, is maybe go back and look at the current year or last year's budget when we were doing this, just to remind the board. We did, of course, adopt last year, the Board of Supervisors adopted a balanced budget. As this board knows, there were no property tax rate increases. And that budget narrowly sustained any inflationary cost last year. And I think this is right out of the budget presentation from last year. So, the current budget, last year's budget, as we adopted, is one hundred and eighty-three million. That was a minimal, a little bit over 1% increase of the previous year of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And so, that's a very important number as we talk about inflation today. We have absorbed inflation costs over the last several years, and our budget relatively has remained minimally increases. And so, as this board will recall, last year's, current year's budget was a stopgap maintenance budget. A lot of discussions with this board last year about if we can get through the twenty-three, twenty-four budget year, we know it's a non-assessment year. Let's see if we can get through it and to the reassessment. And that's where we are. We're trying to make it through. And fortunately, we had the good fortune of interest earnings. And as I've reminded the board on several occasions, this budget was balanced on two million in interest income. And while our interest income continues to look relatively strong, we know any downturn in the market, the feds have discussed about starting to decrease the interest rates over the next calendar year, over the existing calendar year and the next year, any decrease in that, we're going to have to account for. And so, we're hopeful that while everyone would like to see interest rates come down, they do have the advantage when they're there, as they did this year for us, to balance the budget. So, Brian, I think we have another slide there. Post-budget adoption, if you all recall, we adopted the budget in April. And during latter part of April and May, of course, a lot of discussions surrounding SROs and additional fire EMS staffing. And so, here are post-budget add-ons that have been done, and primarily funded through vacancy or personnel savings. And while we're thankful that we have those, that's not always the case when we're fully staffed. And so, we're ever mindful of the $2 million. At some point, if interest income decreases, we're ever mindful of about $655,000 now of ongoing cost, that EMS staffing coverage. The county was not able to secure the safer grant. We were hopeful that we could from the feds, but we did not. But we were able to certainly take care of that staffing through some personnel existing savings. And then, of course, the school resource officers, that commitment was made to go after that state grant. And fortunately, we did secure the state grant. But you'll see there in the bottom that that grant will go away. And we're going to have to phase in to make up the cost for, if we continue the SRO program in some form or fashion, that local dollars will have to be phased in, should the SRO program continue. That's about $1.2 million in four or five years. And we're going to have to at least begin phasing in as we look to the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Of course, that doesn't include any capital expenditures. It does not include uniforms. It does not include vehicles. It does not include radios in that number. So, we recognize we have our challenges ahead of us even before we get into the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And so, for today's purposes, we know this is a very high-level start to our budget season and our budget process. And a lot of discussions have been, I understand, in the community with our board and the school board regarding the reduction in state funding. It's early. We don't necessarily know all of the state funding revenue picture yet. The state has not adopted an amended budget, and will not do so for some time. We are actively monitoring all of our revenues, discretionary revenues. You will hear a little bit from Brian today on that. Let me just caution the board, these are early projections and not necessarily final projections. We will discuss mostly today of what we would call nominal revenue growth, which may not necessarily assume reassessment growth. Reassessment is still, I think this board heard from our reassessment updates from our assessors on Tuesday, with some very close-to-final reassessment figures. They are still working on that, finalizing through the end of the week. And so, as we go through the budget process, you will hear more about those revenues as well. So, that being said, Brian's got several slides, really trying to give the board an overview today, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, of the budget climate, where we are, some possible thoughts, maybe some guidance that we would certainly welcome from the board at the end of today's work session. And then a very important matter that we really need to do today is the adoption, if you will, of our budget calendar. There are some more dates on there for budget work sessions in the month of February. And it's very important, now that we do twice-a-year real estate tax collections, as we have the last couple of years, that we and the board works to have a budget adopted by early April. Last year, we looked, it was adopted April the 11th. It's around that timeframe this year. The big difference this year is there is another hearing, a separate hearing on a separate evening, that is required, and that's on the reassessment. And so, there will be ample opportunity for our citizens to provide feedback in these public hearings. We are proposing a public hearing on the budget and the proposed tax rates, which, of course, we will not present the budget until March the 5th and the proposed tax rates. But that hearing will be late March. And then, there will be a separate hearing required for the reassessment, which will also talk about the advertised assessment real estate rate. The important thing, and Brian will hopefully touch on this again in summary today, is that whatever we advertise in terms of our real estate rates, other tax rates, we can always go down and decrease those. Once a budget is adopted, we cannot increase those once we advertise those. So, that's more coming, as we will present the budget on March the 5th. But we want the board to understand that just because a rate is advertised doesn't necessarily mean that's going to be the rate that will be adopted. And so, I just wanted to make those points. So, I don't want to belabor, Mr. Chairman, because I know we have other items on the agenda this afternoon. So, I'll pause there. And I think Brian's got several slides to continue through the work session. Ryan?
Yes, sir. All right. So, for our current budget climate, so what we know, one-time stimulus funds are running out. At this point, we have some funds on the county side, but really, that's going to impact the school system a lot more. We know there's very little revenue growth projected at the state level. That's evident in what the governor has proposed and a lot of new spending initiatives, which what that means is that also trickles down and means it's going to be less funding to localities for our compensation board, our constitutional office positions, possibly social services, and even our school system. So, we do, speaking of that, we know this year was a, the, once every two years, the state operates on a biennial budget. The reset of the local composite index, that has led to a projected decrease of $3.7 million based on the methodology of that formula. And so, of course, that leaves a budget hole in our school system's budget that we will have to address during this budget process. And of course, inflationary pressures, as Mr. Whitlow said, persist. They're not going away. They're not quite as bad as they were twelve to twenty-four months ago, but they still exist, and we're still dealing with that.
Can I ask you a question? At this point, how much are we seeing increases in our, like, everyday bills? Electric, fuel, things of that nature?
So, it depends.
Is it significantly going up?
It has leveled off compared to a couple of years ago. Yeah, we were seeing 5%, 7% increases on the normal operation, not capital. But things like fuel, things like electric utilities, that type of thing, were probably more in the 5% to 7% range, would be an accurate estimate. Fuel particularly has leveled off. If you notice filling up at the pump, it's kind of leveled. It's pretty static. So, that's not the pressure that it was at this time. Global events, of course, could change that at any moment. But electricity, we are seeing increases there. And a lot of that's driven by the need for utilities to recover costs based on the clean energy bills and things of that nature they're having to implement. So, I would see electricity and utilities along that line continue to be a pressure.
And then, like supplies and paper and computers, pens, I mean, is that significantly going up as well?
I wouldn't say significantly. It is increasing. You know, that probably falls under your average inflation right now. That's running 3%, 3.5% year-over-year. So, things like office supplies, your paper, your pens, your pencils, your paper clips, that's probably going to be more in that 3%, 4% range. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and we'll try to look specifically at some of those inflationary increases and provide that through the work session. Some, we'll talk about some of those in the work session. But we can provide more information as we look at the, through the budget process.
I was just curious as to how much increase we were going to see in operation.
I will say, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that what I would call, you know, Brian touched on this on utilities and supplies, we know we are seeing, you know, what the normal inflation that we're seeing around the country, what has been what I would call hyperinflation, and this board is aware, is the cost of EMS trucks, the cost of fire apparatus vehicles. It's, you know, those percentages are phenomenally higher. And so, those are some of those higher-cost items.
Okay. Yes, sir. So, budget pressures, Mr. Chairman, there's inflation in the top bullet point. And so, fuel, utilities, vehicles, equipment, our maintenance contracts, so all of our software, our leases that we have to operate on with our equipment office or otherwise, they're all going up. Some 7%, 8%, some 10%, 12%. It just depends on the type of service. But we're seeing increases along those lines. We know, we've talked about several times where we update you monthly in our Children's Services Act, those increases are double-digit in the rates. They're staying longer. They're staying in higher cost placements. And so, that's still, even with the 70% roughly state reimbursement, it's still a budget pressure. We mentioned the local composite index and the reduction in state funding for our school system. Mr. Whitlow mentioned the SROs. We're going to see another year of pressure on adult and juvenile detention. We expect, we know for sure that debt service and capital needs will go up in both of those facilities. There will be a component of that in the ask of this board to fund, along with the per diem to continue to fund the operations of the inmates for those facilities. So, for the regional jail, the adult side, the Western Virginia Regional, we do expect an increase. Our population has been up. That percentage is reset every year. So, based on population trends, we know there's going to be an operational increase to that. For the juvenile detention side, we're at capacity for the most part. And there are times where we've had to send our children in the juvenile detention to other facilities because there's not room in our existing facility. So, we're probably, we're certain there's probably going to be an increase or request to add staffing to open up room there. There's capacity in our existing facility. It's the staffing. We have to have, it's in pods of eight. And so, there's going to be additional staffing for that needed. We're at max based on current staffing levels. So, that'll be an operating budget pressure to fund. So, both of those are probably going to be significant ask this year. Public safety operations, we know the continued pressure, specifically fire EMS, the costs associated with going with that, but staffing levels, keeping up with labor market, all of those things, trying to keep overtime down, all of those items that just are part of the pressure of running a fire EMS system. Soloway's collection sites, Mr. Galden has mentioned some of those items to you. So, as we look to bring those online, there's a cost to those. Ultimately, once the system is fully built out, as you saw in his projection, there will be savings. But you're going to have a cost increase as you build it out for, in an interim period, until we can get, realize those savings at full implementation. So, there were three sites that were planned for next fiscal year, and they're roughly $60,000, $70,000 per site when you add in the part-time recurring that we would look to add there. So, compensation and benefits, there are, sorry, yes, sir?
If I may, just for the board, just to tell y'all, we, at the organizational meeting at the regional jail a couple of weeks ago, they are forty staff members short. Yeah, I just wanted to throw that in. Forty. They closed one section. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. And that may come up as a pressure out of the regional jail. Because of that staffing shortage, there may be a request of the localities to fund compensation increases to try and make them more marketable and close some of those vacancies. On compensation and benefits for the county, we are looking at a possible minimum wage increase. It would be the middle of the fiscal year, January 1st, 2025. Right now, the General Assembly has, what I have read, reintroduced bills to increase that from $12 an hour to $13.50 an hour, effective January 1st. That would have to be, to my understanding, also approved by the governor. So, if that passes the General Assembly and approved by the governor, we would have a mid-year increase in our minimum wage. Eventually, that will go to $15 an hour if that legislation passes. So, that's going to be a budget pressure, not just the minimum wage increase. If you increase that, it creates compression. So, that is a very high-dollar amount for us to compensate for. It wasn't as bad when we got to $12 an hour. But when you get to $13.50 and $15 an hour, the ripple effect through our pay scales is going to be tremendous. So, that's a heavy budget pressure. We don't have a dollar amount on that right now. And at least next fiscal year, it would be a half cost, because it would be an implemented mid-year. But just want the board to be aware, we're monitoring that legislation. Market adjustments to continue the compensation plan that the board has graciously funded. And so, that is for our employees to make sure they're at the current level in the pay grade based on the years of service and experience and value to the organization. We would like to continue that. That's going to be a budget pressure. That also allows us to offer starting salaries for new hires, especially if they come with significant experience that would be market-competitive, not just the minimum of the pay grade. Even with that, look this morning, we have seventeen vacancies right now, even with our new compensation plan. And that's what I know of. There's probably more than that, because when we advertise corrections or patrol deputy or paramedic firefighter, we only advertise one position, or there could be multiple vacancies and likely are in that position. So, my guess is that number's probably closer to 22 to 25 vacancies at this point, full-time vacancies. So, it's still a challenge. Our poor HR staff are still trying to hire. They're doing a lot of work on recruiting. But it's going to be a pressure for us as we look to stay competitive and try and continue to stay staffed. Competitive labor market, back to adequate staffing. So, you know, we know every year departments have new position requests every year. This year, we have nineteen new position requests. We don't have a detail on that today. That'll be a future work session. We usually have a compensation and benefits work session, and so that'll be part of the budget calendar. But we always look for that. We always expect that. There's just a really, based on the need and the service-level delivery, our departments usually are pretty specific on what their needs are. So, and then, same thing with the health insurance renewal. We know that there will very likely be another increase. We're seeing high-dollar claims still in the plan. We don't have any indication of how high. There's no indication that it'll be as high as the 25% increase we just experienced this past year. But that will be a budget pressure. We're continuing to monitor that. Probably know a little bit more of that in the next thirty days. And then, the school operations, we know they're still trying to implement. They're in probably year two, I think, of their compensation plan to make their teacher pay and their salaries more competitive with surrounding jurisdictions. And so, that's going to be a budget pressure to them as well, outside of the $3.7 million drop-in, anticipated drop in state funding. Okay. So, can you continue with that a little bit more? So, some of those budget pressures in a more detailed, granular level, it is public safety staffing, it is fire EMS, as we continue to need to pick up coverage and try and add capacity to the system. It's one thing if you to have enough coverage and enough staffing for coverage, but people have vacation. People get sick. People have emergencies, and you have to have people fill in. So, you need some excess capacity. Still looking at span of control. We made some, took some great steps for that last year, or this current year, actually. And so, but that's still budget pressure. Volunteers, our operating capital needs, there are several requests that they have submitted for new funding on those. And we also know that the capital hasn't gotten any cheaper. And so, those will be needs that we'll consider during this process. Increased vehicle costs, we talked a little bit about that with capital. Same thing with capital infrastructure. They don't get any cheaper. And there are some really critical components of that this year in capital, and as the next several years that we really need to, we really need to fund. They're at critical mass. We mentioned the regional jail and juvenile detention center. But just so, that last bullet, so, right now, these are the unfiltered, this is the unfiltered number. Obviously, we get this every year. We always have more requests than we have money to pay for. So, but right now, the operating requests from departments are $8.2 million over the current year. And that's including nineteen new positions at $1.9 million. So, there are several million dollars of requests departments have submitted for their operating needs. That's going to be, obviously, a struggle. Well, we all know that's not going to get funded. And so, it never does. We can't fund all of the requests. But as staff continue to work with departments and work through that, we really hone in on the priorities and what best we can do with the available revenue. So, of course, in future work sessions, all of these items will be in more detail with the board. But it's another big ask. And that's just operating. That's not the capital. So, on the capital, for our five-year plan for next fiscal year, we've tried for five years to add $200,000 a year, and we've added $200,000 once to our annual recurring. So, we really probably, if we would have been successful in doing that, we would have been about a million dollars ahead right now in that annual recurring amount. Unfortunately, we're not. We're still at $2.4 million. Well, what that means is, is capital equipment is increasing double digits. That $2.4 million buys less of the same equipment. So, we're looking at, for just twenty-four, twenty-five, $28 million in CIP requests. That includes almost $775,000 for radio infrastructure. That radio, our emergency radio system is at end-of-life. That's really, at this point, an absolute have-to. $400,000 is the cost for a new ambulance right now. We've heard from that previously of the condition of the fleet. The next truck in the rotation is the Boons Mill Tanker. That request is $1.8 million. And then, the, based on the facility study that we've seen, that priority for a new 911 center, we've talked about that every year. So, the estimate on that, based on what you heard from spectrum design and all of that as they looked, was $3.8 million. So, those items are just next year. So, if you look at the full five-year, we have requests totaling $60 million. There are other facilities in there as we look at our plan. And so, over that period, if you look at $2.4 million, we're only going to have $12 million in local funding. So, the thing is, we look at our CIP plan over the coming weeks, we will probably have to realign some things, because obviously, we won't be able to fund that without additional revenue or additional borrowing for some of the larger projects. So, that's a county snapshot. For our school challenges, they have very similar budget pressures that we do. They have inflation. They have capital facility needs. We know, we've talked about the middle school. We've talked about CTE. We've talked about the loss in state funding, the continued reduction of one-time funding. So, as they spend that down, there will be an expectation of a return to some base level of operations. And there's ADM reduction challenges. So, just to show you, this is a slide that we see and we've used from their budget. And so, we continue to see the loss of ADM. You can see that look over the last several years. It is quite a significant drop. One thing to be aware of is this is a statewide and a national issue. I've actually seen even places like Loudon or Fairfax, they're losing school-age population. California and Los Angeles is losing school-age population. It births, deaths are outnumbering births. And so, this is not a, just a Franklin County school system issue. But what the issue does present is, we have to look at our operations. We have to look at our facilities. We have to look at our structure. Because in a continued enrollment decline, you get to a point of fiscal sustainability. And so, that, we know that's a challenge. It's been a challenge. We've seen it year-over-year. And so, that's something that we'll be looking at. We did want to graphically show you some of that. So, basically, this line here looks very similar to that black line you see there, which is the school ADM on the graph. Let's see if I can move this. Yeah. And so, then, we also wanted to show you what total funding looked like. And this is all funding. This is state funding, federal funding, and our local contribution. You can see, for the first three years of this kind of five-year look, we were fairly flat in the funding. And then, it's jumped up over the last two or three years. A lot of that is going to be one-time money, state or federal. Okay? Now, when we isolate that to local only, you still see the line for the ADM. But you can see the local-only funding has increased significantly over that time period as well. So, we've funded, and a lot of that was, especially the last three years, was to the tune of about $900,000 a year in additional local funding for our school system. So, but what that equates to on a comparison, and these are the current-year budgeted numbers. This is the latest data that we have. This is not actuals. This is based on the adopted budgets that they have. But when you look at our surrounding localities on a per-student basis, you can see that we fund more per student than any other county around us. And so, as we look at school and funding challenges, you know, these are items that we're going to have to look at as staff. There is going to be components of one-time money in here. And that's going to be the case for every county on here. As those monies are spent, some of these numbers may reset. All we have is what's budgeted for the current year. We would not have that access to some of that data. But we wanted to make a point of, obviously, the schools are very important to the county and the board. And based on those increases in local funding, we've certainly seen that in prior years. And so, we'll certainly look to do that as we continue forward. But it's certainly not a shortfall or a negligence on our part as far as funding the school system. So, we wanted you to have access to that information of the commitment that this board and previous boards have made on our funding of our school system. But we do want to point out, this will not account for the reduction in the LCI. So, there's another $3.7 million that's going to come. That's why I say, next year, with the, all the school system budgets and the LCI, the new numbers, and then drop a one-time state or federal money, you know, these numbers will reset. They will every year. And so, just be aware of that. But this is a snapshot in time of what our funding looks like in the current fiscal year. Okay?
Brian, can I ask a question?
We would not have that access to some of that data. But we wanted to make a point of, obviously, the schools are very important to the county and the board. And based on those increases in local funding, we've certainly seen that in prior years. And so we'll certainly look to do that as we continue forward. But it's certainly not a shortfall or a negligence on our part as far as funding the school system. So we wanted you to have access to that information of the commitment that this board and previous boards have made on our funding of our school system. But we do want to point out, this will not account for the reduction in the LCI. So there's another three-point-seven million that's going to come. That's why I say next year with the, all the school system budgets and the LCI, the new numbers, and then drop a one-time state or federal money, you know, these numbers will reset. They will every year. And so just be aware of that. But this is a snapshot in time of what our funding looks like in the current fiscal year.
Brian, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
What's in that roughly nineteen thousand dollar per pupil? Does that include busing? I mean, is it everything rolled into that? I'm just curious why ours is so significantly higher than these other localities.
It would include all of their operations. I would say that that would not include capital, which is about one-point-two million. But that would include, when I say capital, I mean major capital. Buses and things would be included in that, transportation costs, any of your facilities, your building maintenance. All of that would be included in that number. So you kind of mentioned it, Mr. Carter. You know, there's a lot of factors that can kind of change these numbers. How many elementary schools? How many middle and high schools? We're one of the few localities that only have one middle and high school. And so some of that could factor in the bus routes, whether you do the dual busing or single busing. If you have multiple middle and high schools, you don't have to transport as far, so the fuel costs could be less. There could be a lot of comparison that would go into that. But all of that, the full operating cost of the school system, including those non-personnel, those non-teaching instructional costs would be included in that number.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, just to piggyback on to Mr. Carter. One number we may need as we continue with our budget, start our budget deliberations, is how much over and above the SOQs do we fund on the local level?
We do. We fund well above.
I would like to know that number.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I can give it to you before we leave today. I have the report.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And Brian, I'm, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I'd like to piggyback off the mic as well. That is a significant difference on these surrounding counties. And I don't know, and I would like to have some more information on this as to how this compares to Bedford County at thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty and us at eighteen thousand. I'd like, we need some, we need something more to compare this to and see these costs in real time, what they're doing.
Yeah, I think for us, I mean, pending board direction, this was kind of an overview. But I think pending board direction, as we work with our school system on the next-year budget, what that looks like, what the county contribution and items, the priorities are to fund, that type of analysis is probably warranted to do some comparison, to look at what makes up the number. I think that's just good fiduciary responsibility. So I would, I would think in the coming weeks, we would have some additional analysis, some future work sessions to break down some of these numbers and some priorities. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Brian. I just, when you have a gap that large, that needs some, needs some digging into.
Yes, sir. So to pivot a little bit.
One more thing.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Can this be emailed to the supervisors, this slide?
We do, we have hard copies, and we'll be happy to email you the PowerPoint of the presentation if you would like that.
I would like to have this to respond to some of the emails I've been receiving concerning our funding of the schools. I don't think the general public is aware of these figures at all. You can't be.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, Mr. Carter, were you through?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Brian, the LC, while we're still on the school piece.
Yes, ma'am.
The LCI, is that something that is knowable, projectable in terms of if schools finance in your office and you? Could we or should we have known this a year, year and a half ago to prepare?
I don't think we would ever be able to calculate the exact because the formula is so complicated. I think what you would see is you would kind of, you should know a general trend in knowing that property values are increasing.
Right.
To what level that would impact the formula and the funding, that would be difficult. But I think there, and seeing this gap now, I think we all thought it would increase. I don't think any of us thought it would increase that much.
Well, we got the surprise about the fifty-five percent.
Right.
To say average residential, right? So we know all these numbers are going to slide in the upward direction. But I did not know if there's any potential for us to work potentially closer with the schools' finance and ask them, is there any potential metrics or ability to keep communication going from year to year on, you know, things we're seeing in the marketplace? Because we know the components of the LCI formula.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we just take a cursory review of those components, it seems to me that we could just plug in our knowledge to see if there are any indicators that would be precursors to seeing, like this three-point-seven million dollar number come to fruition.
Yes, ma'am. And we certainly will for future going forward. I think part of it is going to be, the LCI formula, of course, is on true value. So being as we don't reassess more frequently than in four years, we will not have the true value. So we might have to reach out to some realtors or some other indices to get that true value. I don't know that the Virginia Department of Education publishes that until they reset. So that's why I say there could be some real projection in there. So to a level, we're not really sure what actual numbers they're using, what indices they're looking at for locality sales. But certainly something we're going to be paying a lot more attention to in future years.
And I think it's safe to say, this board has had some very loose conversation, my colleagues, about potentially looking at reassessing, reassessing every two years versus four years to take out those very highs and those very low periods. We can see now that the every four years has had a significant impact with LCI. Fair enough to say, Brian?
It has. I think for us, what we would do with more frequent was we would catch it sooner.
That's my point.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me ask a question here. Now, this is probably going to be a dumb question, but I still want to ask it. With these numbers here, this eighteen-point-eight thousand dollars, and then this LCI number has gone up to the three-point-seven million, is there any way to get any credit with these higher numbers towards that three-point-seven number?
Not that I'm aware of. Yeah, not that I'm aware of. I think, and to Ms. Smith's point of that we're well above the SOQ, the required minimum local effort. But the formulas, I understand it doesn't take into account the, any other efforts by the locality to fund their school system. It doesn't take into account any reserve balances. So none of that would actually help that three-point-seven million dollar reduction. Yes, sir.
But Brian. Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
This got brought up in our joint meeting with the school board. And I understand we keep talking about the assessment, but this, this whole thing goes back to the real market value of real estate.
That's correct.
Apart from the assessment. And I understand having an assessment every two years, but there's a huge cost tied to that.
Yes.
And I could tell everybody that real estate was going up a whole lot. Everybody in here knew real estate was going up a whole. We didn't need an assessment to tell us that. And we have other localities around us having assessments every two years. We can look at theirs and know it's going up.
Sure.
And I think back to Lori's point, someone should have forecasted that this three-point-seven million dollar drop was coming.
Right.
Because simply what real estate has done, you take all other aspects out of that formula. Real estate's went to the roof, LCI's going to drop.
Right.
And I think that's the point we were getting at. But we keep bringing up the assessment. It's the real market value of real estate.
Which ultimately the assessment is, it's just the timing of it. But yeah, and I think that that's what I meant by the indices. So there are other market data we would be able to estimate, you know, how that impacts the formula when you throw in adjusted gross income and state sales tax. But you're right. And in talking with our school system counterparts, I mean, I think we, they all suspected that we would receive less state funding because of the reset of real estate values. I don't think we expected it to be as high as it was. I think that's what caught us by surprise.
And to also to that point, Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Smith and others, you know, part of the LCI is, it is. It's the real value of property, as you noted, Mr. Mitchell. And it's also adjusted gross income and sales. Another large component of it is ADM.
That's right.
And, you know, we've discussed this every budget year with our school system. And in fact, the previous superintendent has discussed rightsizing our school system. Because there has been a, I think at some point since mid-two thousands, potentially, and I haven't, and please don't quote me on this, but we looked at it roughly, an estimated approximate twenty percent reduction, if you will, in the entire student population and our public school system since about the mid-two thousands.
Brian, remind us again what the approximate cost is to have the appraisals.
Have, I'm sorry, what?
How much it costs us every time we do the appraisals?
The reassessment.
The reassessment. This past year, we have to issue an RFP for that. This past year, it was eight-hundred, just under nine-hundred thousand, I believe. So that would be the cost. So I'll round up to a million for ease of math. And so that's once every four years. So essentially, it's about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year would be what that cost equates to, based on this last cycle. The, I think we got a fairly good deal. If I remember from this tour, and some of the localities were paying over a million dollars just a year later after they issued their RFP, so.
Well, there are not as many vendors in the Commonwealth doing this. So, you know, there's some, you know, they can maximize their costs because, I mean, they're not competing heavily.
There's maybe three, especially in our area, that would even issue a proposal if we did an RFP. Yes, ma'am. And that, that's part of the issue. And even that, they're so maxed out to capacity, even if we wanted to issue an RFP or look at that. A lot of these vendors, depending on their surrounding localities, that's their book of business. So they bill their book of business every four years. So if we try and change their cycle up, it could be a very real possibility some or all of the current vendors would not be available because they're already booked out for that year. So that would be something we'd have to look at as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to Mr. Mitchell's point, Mr. Mitchell, please understand that I'm not suggesting that we move in a given direction on how often we reassess. But we've talked about it enough loosely that I think we need to understand the parameters of it and the consequences of doing one versus the other to make sure that we're making the best possible decisions simply because of the implication that comes into play with doing it one way versus the other. And I think that's where the discussion points may lie.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. So pivoting a little bit to more general counting. So the revenue outlook, very, very early numbers. I can't put enough caution on that. So right now, we're looking at new discretionary revenue of approximately three million dollars for next fiscal year. That's mostly driven by personal property. So if you remember, we had large increases in vehicles. We gave a reduction in that. We, that had expired and then we, but vehicle values had moderated. So really, without knowing what that market was going to do, it's rebounded. They're lower than they were, but they're not back down to what I guess you would say a base comparison from about three years ago. And so we're still looking at personal property. There's still growth there. People are still buying very expensive vehicles. And so that was mostly what's driving that. What I want to make sure that we're clear of is that this is a very conservative projection. This does not assume additional revenue from the reassessment. So this is nominal new revenue growth in our personal property taxes, our sales taxes, those items in that level. So now, if you remember, as we look at discretionary revenue, we always have a discussion of what do we fund? And how do we split that between the county and the school system? And so that discussion will need to be had during our upcoming budget process. And of course, how much funding we're able to allocate will inform the rest of the process of, can we cover our costs with new revenue? Will there need to be budget reductions? What do those look like? And so those will be forthcoming. But right now, it looks like for both county and school system, we're looking at about three million dollars in new revenue. It's a very early revenue projection. Of course, pending reassessment and pending what happens in the General Assembly. So depending on how that works, it was requested of staff to come back with possible budget reduction strategies. What does that look like? What may that entail? These are very high-level. I think if we, if they have opportunity for feedback today, we will take whatever feedback we can get, and we will get in more detail on some of these. But, so I think what we want to, we want to show is that personnel reductions. You saw we have nineteen new position requests. And so if we reduce staff, most of the staff are in public safety, sheriff's office, and fire EMS. And so if you're, unless you're going to reduce that area, you're not going to get a lot of impact on the budget by reducing or looking at any personnel cuts. There's only seventy-seven employees outside of what would be considered essential. So what we think they're or mandated, that's going to be your fire EMS, your sheriff's office, your constitutionals. There are state code requirements. We have to have so many positions in those offices. And we are reimbursed by the state for a good portion of those salaries so that your net savings would be reduced. We have to operate a landfill. We have to have a solid waste department. We have to have building inspectors at least to some level. And so there are a lot of code-driven functions that we have to do on some level. But when we look at that, out of four-hundred-and-twenty-three full-time employees, probably seventy-seven could be looked at. A lot of those are in departments with staff of ten or less. So one staff reduction in that department critically impacts service levels. So as we move forward, if that's a strategy, we want to continue to research. It's going to be something staff will inform, and we'll work back through the departments of what does that impact to service levels look like? Because there's hardly any reduction in staff outside of the big ones that are core government services that we're going to reduce that are not going to have a service level impact. So to break down current year on what that looks like in the general fund, because everybody thinks we have a hundred-and-ten-million-dollar general fund. Surely you have money to spare. I want to point out that in the current year, of our current general fund, thirty-two percent of that is our local transfer to the school system. So then, when you back that out, we have, and then the other thirty-two percent of that is personnel. Salaries, benefits, full and part-time. So if you look, the sheriff's office and nine-one-one is five-point-seven percent. Public safety, don't have the percentage there, but it's a little bit less. Health and welfare, operating, that's our social services, our benefit programs, our CSA, that's almost ten percent. So really, everybody else outside of those pockets are seven-point-two-five percent of the total general fund budget. So it's not a large number that we're talking about. Okay? So if you want to break that down further and you want to look at the budget, you know, personnel, we mentioned the thirty-two percent. We mentioned the transfer. The other transfers of eight-point-six percent, that is to your capital fund. That is to your debt service fund. So those are, for the most part, obligated things. There are reductions that could be made in some of that. There will be an impact, but they're a reduction. Debt services contractually required. We have to pay our debt service. Capital that you could look at, nine-one-one is a little separate, so that would be a transfer in there. But those are the big items that make up transfers. So we broke out obligated and non-obligated funds. And so for what we define as obligated, these are contractual services. We have to have insurance. We have to insure vehicles. We have to have liability insurance. We have to pay the annual maintenance contracts to operator software for our financial system, for our building permit system, for our system that the treasurer commissioner used to make collections and assess. All of those come at an annual cost. Those are what we consider obligated funds, leases on our copiers. We sign a lease for five years. So we consider that a contractual obligation. Doesn't mean it can't be reduced, but there's an impact. If we don't have a permitting system, we can't issue building permits. If we don't have a financial system, we can't function. We can't issue checks and process accounts payable. We can't process payroll. So we took that as, we wanted to make sure that that's what we accounted for as obligations, all the insurances and all the contractual requirements. So if you remember, when we do the monthly financial report, we say, well, this budget's trending a little higher because we had to pay all these upfront costs for our obligations. That's, these are these items that we're talking about. So really, out of the hundred-and-ten-million-dollar general fund budget, we, two, a little over two percent is what we have classified as non-obligated. That, to me, would be your office supplies, your training budget, maybe your travel budget, advertising if you're in tourism or economic development, or advertising under the board's account for new job positions or for public hearings. All of that would be considered non-obligated. We could cut back on that to some level. But that's only two-point-two million dollars out of a hundred-and-ten million dollars. So if we cut all of it, which would basically have a severe service level impact for our departments, you're only talking two-point-two million dollars. So continuing on with budget reduction strategies. We know there's a structural imbalance in the school system. We've graphically showed that between loss of ADM and funding and what we would need to look at. I think it's important, and this isn't new, right? You know, we know the public school system, they've been looking at this to their credit. This has been a long-term analysis. The report that, that they have shared and they've looked at for their efficiency. The report that they have shared and they've looked at for their efficiency study, that was issued last year. So this is not a new knee-jerk reaction to the loss of state funding. This is a structural imbalance that they've been aware of and under Dr. Cobb's previously and continued with Dr. Sears, that efficiency study has been asked for and has been completed. So, and that's what's showing some of the reductions. I do think, at some point, we have to make decisions as budget. And I think, you know, Ms. Smith, you like to say budgets are choices. They're about choices.
That's right.
And so for us, budgets are about choices and budgets are about values. And so if we were a business, I would look at that and say, our school system is losing customers and the costs are increasing. We need to cut that. That's not profitable. We're not a business. Government is not a business. Government operates on things that have no profit margin. And so for us, it's going to be a matter of what are our values? And those values indicate comments of, do we want single or dual busing? That's a value. That's not a financial analysis. That's a value-based analysis. Do we want to close elementary schools or do you want to keep them open? Are they fabric of the community? Those are values. That's not a financial analysis. So as we go forward in the budget process, we're going to have to decide from the structural imbalance, what are our values? What is important to us as a community? So as we look at, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Brian, I didn't mean to interrupt. I was just going to ask, so you've had board supervisor requests for cuts already?
Not specific cuts. Our understanding from the joint school board meeting was staff needs to get together to figure out how we might could close this three point seven million dollar gap.
And that's what that means?
That's all, that's all that means, yes ma'am.
All right.
Yes. And so most non-personnel is obligated for maintenance service contracts, leases, professional services. That's our annual audit. That would be in there. We are required by code to do an annual audit. Mr. Gwen, now, you know, we could cut some of his hours back if we want to. I don't know how I like that. But he would be considered a professional service. And so we have to have a county attorney. And so all of these items are part of what we consider obligated from that pie chart we were showing you. And so to reiterate that, non-obligated is really two point two million. That's kind of the smaller balance, but the things that don't have some kind of contractual obligation to them. So we have, at the board's direction, we've worked with Davenport. We've looked at possible use of one-time funds. Davenport has stated that use of one-time funds, when there is a plan to reduce recurring deficits in the future, is going to be acceptable. It's not going to be devastating, I think probably was their term, in order to do that, if we need a stopgap. But I think that stopgap of the use of one-time funds in order, if we need them, to balance this year's budget is going to have to be accompanied by a solid plan of next year, we expect adjustments, whether that's additional revenue, whether that's budget reductions. But that needs to be part of any use of one-time funds. The schools have requested, or have mentioned, one point two million in carryover that could possibly be used on therein. We have the million dollars in the budget stabilization reserve and we also have a million dollars in our capital reserve as well that could be used for any of that one time. And if we go deeper than that, you know, we obviously have our unassigned fund balance, so. So challenges and implications, you know, structural imbalance. We've talked about that with existing capital needs, recurring capital funding. We're to the point now with capital, and we'll get into that. We'll have a future capital work session where we provide more detail. We always do that. We have a separate one. The capital needs are enough now. We're going to need to decide if we're going to continue to do certain things. Because at the current level, I mean, if I remembered, I said there's sixty million dollars over five years. You know, and a lot of that is, some of that's going to have to be done. The radio system has to be done. It has to be functional. We don't have to fund all of a new fire truck every year, you know. But I do think ambulances sound to be in a pretty critical spot. We can look at our facilities. You don't have to build new facilities. You don't have to renovate existing facilities. We can look at some of those, cut back on capital. But as we go through the CIP process, if it's determined those are our priorities, then if we don't create new revenue over that two point four million to help pay for these things or we don't increase the revenue to pay the debt service to borrow the money on new facilities, and this isn't even really factoring in a CTE facility in this analysis. If you remember from Davenport, that was anywhere between two and a half, three and a half pennies on the current real estate rate to pay for the CTE facility. There is legislation about a sales tax, a local sales tax possibility in General Assembly. So obviously, we're monitoring that. That would be very helpful. But if we don't and we want to continue with these projects, we're going to exhaust our capital reserves in the next five years.
And Brian, that means our bond rating is going to take a dive.
We, yes, yes. I mean, that's what that means. If you, Ms. Smith, you were with us. You know, one of the first questions those rating agencies asked us, do you have any plans on spending down that one-time money?
That's right.
That was one of the first questions they asked us.
All three agencies were very concerned about our preservation of reserves.
So, and you know, you heard Mr. Stone from our auditors. Our current fund balances is not excessive. If he's not a lot, if you look at surrounding localities, we're middle of the road. I know it sounds like a lot, but we're a two hundred million dollar annual operation when you count the county and the school system. So it's not, and once it's gone, it's gone. And we were fortunate in the last five years with a lot of stimulus money to increase that exponentially. It took twenty years before that just to get to that point. So once it's gone, it's gone. It's a whole lot harder to get back now that our budget and our revenues at the state, national, even local level are starting to stabilize. That one-time money has run through the system at this point, I guess I'm trying to say.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one more question? Brian, I am seeing that there are some localities that are reapplying, if you will, for ARPA monies that are left. Do we have opportunities as a locality? Or would we, should we, look at trying to pull down more ARPA funding that I think has a pay ceiling, I think, twenty twenty-six? What is your, what are your thoughts on that?
We do, the ARPA requirements are they have to be obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four and spent by December thirtieth, thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Right.
Yes, ma'am, you're right. I think it's going to depend on, if we're going to do it, we would have to have the ability to apply, receive the grant and really, especially anything large, issue an RFP awarded by the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four date. That would obligate the money. I think at the state level at this point, there are still possibly some grant programs. From what I have read on the federal level, they have reclaimed a lot of unspent ARPA money for other spending priorities at the federal level. So I don't know what that may impact on maybe what would have been a grant program last year or a few months ago that may not be this time.
Yeah, I mean, I just heard this recently, that there were some localities that are applying. And so I just want it for our board to be abreast of the potential, maybe. Brian, if you could maybe just update the board, if that's at the pleasure of the board, on what we can do, is there an opportunity? And if there is, should we? Because I know that there are timelines and certain restrictions in play.
There would be. And so certainly, we'll look at that, see what opportunities might be. I don't know if it'd be direct federal, but it'd probably be passed through through state agencies. We'll look at all that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, is there any debt service that's going away that's going to help us a little bit with some of this?
Not next year. Not next fiscal year. In fiscal year twenty twenty-six, there is. I think, looking at it, don't quote me on it. It might have been about one point seven million on the school side. County debt actually goes up a little bit based on the way we structured it over the next couple of years. But we will see overall net drop-off in debt right now. And so I think if we use any one-time money, that's also got to be factored into some of the reductions that we may want to look to make. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think it was consensus of the board in past couple of meetings that anytime there's Harper or grant money that we need to jump on it to save county dollars. Okay. Any more questions for Brian?
So if not, then as far as feedback, you know, things that will help staff as we move forward, whether today or in the future, as we craft, you know, we need as much as we can feedback on any use of additional revenue, whether that's reassessment, whether that's a meals tax, whether that's something else. If it's on the table at all, we would certainly like to know that. Allocation of discretionary revenue to the school system. You know, that three million, how we split that? If we do a fifty-fifty, if we do a different percentage? What that looks like, where a board comfort level may be? Because that's going to, that's going to drive use of some of that one-time money, how we would recommend allocating it and really what level of funding we could either, we could either cover or we could actually implement, or we would have to come back to you and say, okay, given this level of revenue, we're going to need this level of cuts. And that's going to help inform our process as far as how that new revenue is allocated. If reductions are necessary, and that's the board's desire, do we want to touch the core services of government? And that's public safety, fire, EMS, sheriff and solid waste. If you don't, your budget savings are going to be very minimal. If you do, of course, that's a core service and that is typically an expectation of government that those are provided. Are personnel reductions and the accompanying service level reductions going to be considered? If they are, we don't need you to tell us which ones necessarily yet. If you have priority, certainly look at that. But then we'll go back to the drawing board and see what do we, we'll work with our departments of what can we not do? What is that, what does that save? What programs we have to eliminate on that? What service level we have to cut back on in order to accomplish that? And we'll provide that information to the board. But any thoughts or anything that, if it's completely off the table, then that helps staff because we won't spend time going down a scenario that's just not palatable for the board?
Anybody got any thoughts that they wish to express at this time? My only, my only thought or my, for this, is that the carryover funds for the schools, they don't get any of that that goes to that three point seven. That would be, that would be my take on that.
Okay.
They need to put some feedback into it. The other, the other things, the other things that you have here from my part, that's staff's job to figure this out, to give us the budget. And then we'll look at it at that point.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Brian, I, the extra, what is that on the, where we did not give the discount on the personal property? What is the exact number on that?
We, last year, we withheld twenty-two percent. We reduced the property assessment by twenty-two percent. And that was restored for this year. But then there was a drop in vehicle value. So I don't know that net, that'd probably be Ms. Torrance's question, what that netted out to.
Ms. Torrance?
Yeah, I don't know what as a percentage that equates to.
You know, I would, and I've had conversations with most everybody sitting up here as we've discussed these school issues and on the size of their budget and what we got to do. And my, and I've said it myself, when you look at the size of the school's budget and you look at a small, a small amount like that, and if someone, if that happened to our budget and someone came to us, it would be catastrophic to our budget. So I, and I, and I've had these conversations with everyone, including today. And I've said it myself, if we're going to look at the schools and say, y'all losing this amount of money over that, that large a budget, make it up. And even for myself, I'm saying this. If we're going to say that to the schools, we got to look at it for ourself. And these inflationary issues that the government's facing, it's facing our families and people ju, if not harder. We've got elderly on fixed incomes, young families trying to make it. And I'm not going to name anything for cuts, but there's always room. There's always room.
There is, just depends on the level and the comfort level of the service impact. There's always room for cuts.
Services to the people and things people have asked for, but there's things above that. And we'll dig into them deeper.
That'll work.
Ms. Torrance, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but the governor has proposed several things. One of them is cutting out the car tax. Do you have any idea what that kind of number is going to be to Franklin County?
Right now, the state do, we're filling out a survey that lets you know the number of vehicles we have, how many of your business, how many of your pleasure, the license fee, the levies that have been applied to that. I have to do that over the last three years. They're lumped in by tonight because according to the general assembly tomorrow. And they're just looking now to get an impact. Every locality across the state handles things differently. And some have rates of, some have a higher tax rate, different things, different amounts of reimbursement from the state for the personal property tax relief that was initiated back in nineteen ninety-seven. All of that varies state-wise. And the state is trying to get a handle on what this is going to cost the state. And I think right now, it's just a fact-finding thing. But they are seriously looking at it. And from what I've been told, if it goes there, they'll be looking at replacing that if they can do it with the sales tax. Of course, that poses another problem a lot because we don't call it sales tax. And when the state starts reimbursing money back to the localities, it doesn't always get restricted the way it should because data in, data out. So that's going to be a major concern if they do go that route.
Do you have any preliminary figures on the effect of Franklin County?
I'm still putting together Franklin County. And basically, they're just wanting to know what it, what we collect in private vehicles opposed to business vehicles. I told them business pay, well, they're factoring everything in. So these surveys that we have to fill out in there are detailed. And then they're going to put them all together before they take it to the general. They may see that it's too massive to try to do it and may put it in the road, don't know. But that's what they're doing now because they're on the fact-finding mission.
Efficient. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions?
If I may. Brian, respect to the inquiries that you're making of the board.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think it's going to be any secret to my colleagues. We have talked for probably three of my last four years about the need to shore up our staffing levels in the county because of the increased demand on services that we have here in the county. And even things like a code enforcement officer that we don't even have. You know, we, if we're going to look at reductions, we're going to be forced to look at service levels. That's where we are. We're not in any other position than a reduction in services. We balanced last year with interest income. That's where we are. I do not support personally getting into the weeds with personnel reductions. I think that that would be disingenuous to our citizens who are expecting something in services for the tax money they're paying. I think that's our responsibility, that's our fiduciary responsibility. In our role is to ensure services are delivered and are delivered well and qualitatively. Second big thing for me, the schools. You know, I think you all will recall that, you know, for probably the last year, I've been putting, you know, in some of our monthly meetings, some pressure on the schools in terms of with the reduction, the significant reduction in ADM. There comes a time, and the business model that was spoke of earlier, the schools need, in my humble opinion, I'm not an elected school board member, but you have a dramatic reduction in the number of students we're educating. They need to align the school's budget accordingly. And I'm not going to get into telling them how to do it. Statutorily can only, we only have two ways to budget, I mean, to fund the schools, which is in lump sum or by three or four categories. So I think that if they do this, what I would refer to as required alignment of everything being on the table to see what it's going to take from the bottom up to realign our school division to address current ADM with some modest projections in ADM over as maybe next three to five years. I think, number one, that's going to free up contributions, the nine hundred thousand dollars that was spoke of earlier. I think the per pupil cost, we're going to dig down into that more. That per pupil cost could just by exercise of this board in terms of how we fund on the local level, impact, you know, local allocation to the schools on the, I don't know how much local goes into the per pupil. But I think that if, but just by exercise, if the schools realign, we, there's going to be a significant cost savings. And so I think that we need to ensure and encourage the school board to do this work. Whether it's LCI or not LCI, this work needs to be done. This is why the school system got their, commissioned their facility study last year, because they acknowledged that something's gotta change. They can't keep coming and asking for more money. And that chart, that bar chart illustrated, we're giving them more money every year, that I think Brian just showed us. And so we're giving more money, and student enrollment's going down. And I understand there's inflationary pressures built in their budget. I understand they've still gotta bus, they've still gotta feed, you know, do the cafeteria piece, I get all that. But I am not satisfied that there cannot be significant savings realized if they do a true alignment, even down to maybe perhaps doing some zero-based budgeting that says, let's realign what, what the needs are, how we educate our children with excellence, how we educate them with appropriate staffing levels at this level. And let's see how our, we build our budget up from there, and then start doing some comparative analyses that starts to look at where the cost savings are and how it impacts the local share that we have a role in. I think, for me, that's gotta happen, from my perspective. And, you know, I, I, I really don't want our current staff and our services to start getting compromised, because difficult decisions cannot be made by the two elected bodies in this county. We owe it to our staff to make sure, we, we're, you know, planning and zoning, I can't tell you how much of that I deal with weekly, and it's not their fault, it's that we're understaffed. And, and, you know, we've got, Margaret's got issues, like in her office, she can't audit sales tax. We've got issues that we are gonna have to address, code enforcement officer. We have ordinances that we constantly tweak, we have to use those ordinances to make our decisions. But guess what, there's nobody out there on the other side of that monitoring that to making sure that our ordinances and the decisions made by this body are being complied with. We've gotta start looking comprehensively at our organization from an efficiency standpoint, to make sure we're spending our money wisely, but also in balance with service expectations, and making sure that things like public safety, that we can run ambulances, that we don't have just one ambulance at a station, and if that ambulance is twenty miles away doing first due, and a call comes in, that they have no ambulance. These are critical things that we've gotta really have a strong discussion on. It's easy to talk about cutting things, but we've gotta talk about, if we cut things, we've gotta talk about the consequences of those cuts. It cannot and should not be arbitrary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a follow-up, I agree with what Lori stated, and it's a lot of tough decisions that are gonna have to be made here, and I want the general public to be aware, we may be able to save a school this year, but in the future, there's gonna be tough decisions made. And I think, I'm not gonna candy coat it, I think the school board is probably gonna have to close a school, maybe two schools, because we're not gonna be able to keep putting this money up there without them realigning their budget. I, I hate it, just like everybody else, but they did the study, Evergreen told them what was gonna have to be done. And I feel like it's been packed off on our board to be the bad guy, and it's really not our decision, it's a school board budget decision, not us.
Marshall.
Mr. Carter, I know we got a windfall back in twenty-two on the real estate tax collection going two times. Is there any benefit right now if the ones that pay in June, a hundred percent of all their tax pay? Would it be any benefit now, do we receive any benefit from that monetarily? I mean, as far as collection goes, would it help the county?
As far as the, the real estate, that first half, there are some that pay a hundred percent in June. It's not a very high number, but we can look at that, if you would like to.
Well, I understand, I understand. You know, back twenty-two, interest rates were very low. I mean, right now, a homeowner can put money in the bank and make money, that other half of it. I don't know if it's possible to look at an incentive now, or if that's even, I guess it's, we could do it according to law and all, but and that percentage, I know, we get, they collect about what, what's the time, June, end of June?
June fifth and December fifth are the, the, the real estate dates, yeah, yeah. The first one would be June fifth would be the due date. Yes, sir.
As far as any incentive, if it could be offered to them, we could look to our bank then, you know, and see, sure, we can't give them what the bank does, we wouldn't be gaining anything, but it might be a possibility.
We could look at an option on, on what's allowed by code that, that we have the ability to do, and you're right, we could compare that with our current interest rate that we're earning on money, to your point of, is there a discount essentially for paying early? Yes, sir.
You know, something to look at, I think.
Okay.
I, the only other thing that I got to add, I agree with my colleagues, the schools, if they close the school, it's on them, not on the board of supervisors. They need, they're the ones, it's, it's not our job to, to do the schools. And I'm tired of getting blamed for it, for lack of a better word, that we're the bad guys, and we're not. They need to do some restructuring. And then one other thing that I wanna add, we made great strides last year in regards to our staff, trying to get alignments in salaries and everything. I don't wanna see none of that undone. I wanna see that, I, I don't wanna go backwards. I want us to keep going forward with what we've done there, but, all right, with nothing else on that, thank you, Brian, for your presentation.
Mr. Thompson, Mr. Chairman, we have one more slide.
Oh, okay.
But it's, it's really regarding the budget calendar. And so, you know, hearing all this, here's what we have proposed at this point, and so we're, we're here, this really is after today. And so realistically, just want board feedback on how many work sessions you would like to have, what you would like in those work sessions. So we have here, starting February sixth, possible budget work sessions. In years past, we have, we have met with departments, they have presented to the board their needs, their requests. And then that leads up to ultimately Mr. Whitlow's presentation of his proposed budget, and which is right now scheduled, or proposed to be scheduled for March fifth. So i- if the board would like public hearings, or I mean, additional work sessions, those items, we can certainly look at that. It, it depends on the pleasure of the board. Would you like staff to present a budget and then have work sessions? Would you like work sessions ahead of time, after, before the March fifth date or after the March fifth date? Would you like us to follow up with the school system staff and try and come up with a work session before March fifth on some additional analysis? It's really just the pleasure of the board. A lot of these items on here are also related to the necessary public hearings. And so, in order to keep, as Mr. Whitlow said, we, we really by middle of April kind of is the last date we can, we can set that real estate tax rate in order for the commissioner and the treasurer to really get bills out in time for that June fifth due date. So in order to do these items, we would have to, we have to advertise a thirty-day notice for the reassessment public hearing, which is separate from the budget review, public hearing. And so in order to do that, we, you would see, we would, we would look to advertise that around middle of March, after the budget has been presented. Of course, we would need board feedback on your comfort level on advertising the reassessment, because in that reassessment notice, it would have to be the proposed, the proposed new tax rate. Then we would have to advertise the proposed budget and the all-tax rates, which would include your real, personal, sheen or tools, all of those items that the board adopts every year. So if all of that aligned, we would have time for some work sessions in March, additional to February, should the board so desire. And then we would have our public hearings at, on March twenty-sixth for the county budget and the, the tax rates. And then we would have another work session in there before we have the reassessment public hearing. And then what we would look for, hopefully at the latest, April ninth, is the adoption of the tax rates after that reassessment public hearing, so. But that, with that kind of layout, certainly we'll look for any board feedback, and ultimately, we would hope for an adoption of the budget calendar, and then staff will start preparing for the necessary dates.
Okay, I'll open it for you in just a minute for your thoughts. For my part, for my part, I'll go ahead and say that. I'm not, I'm not up to any work sessions, other than what's at the regular board meeting, until after the budget is given to us. It's not our budget until staff is through. We spend a lot, and we're taking, when we pull away from staff to come to these little, you know, I've answered seven hundred and fifty-two calls, we already know what everybody does. That's y'all's job. Then once we get the budget back, once we get the budget back and it's given to us, it's our budget, then that's when we look at these, if we've got questions. And that's how I feel about it. Ms. Smith?
I guess holistically, I, I appreciate budget work sessions, and I think that, you know, after Mr. Whitlow presents his budget to the board, that's when I would like to be hearing from the departments, because he has made public his budget to us. We can hear from the departments, and we, that can be part of our decision-making process in terms of whether we need more information, or whether there are things on the table, off the table. So, you know, I'm not sure that it's gonna do us any good to have work sessions prior to getting the budget. You know, other than just to set priorities. If we need to have a, you know, a capital work session ahead of budget, that's certainly acceptable to me. The more planning, the better, but that's just kinda where I am.
I agree with Ms. Smith's comments. I think, once we receive our budget from Mr. Whitlow, that gives us an opportunity to look at, at what's being proposed to us. At that time, it becomes our budget. I will say this, I wanna give each department head the opportunity to address the board. If they so desire and want to address the board with their needs, I think they should have that opportunity. Whether that's before we receive Chris's proposed budget or after, I wanna make sure that our department heads have that opportunity. Now, we're not gonna require them to, if they choose not to, that's, that's fine. But if they want time before this board, I think that we owe that to our department heads to hear them out. And I, I also, with prior conversations, I, I kept saying, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I think I, I should, in regard to the school's budget, I know there's, I think the school board has some work to do. I think they've got to get in, roll up their sleeves, find where they can make adjustments, and make the appropriate adjustments. I will say this, for me, I will not vote for anything, period, that closes an elementary school. And that's where I'm standing, and I'm gonna stay on that. I think our elementary schools that we have are central in our communities. They're important to our communities. There, for a lot of them, there are an identity to our communities. And if we allow these schools to be closed, then we're robbing these communities of that identity. And I will not support that in any way. I think there are other facilities that need to be looked at before we look at elementary schools. That's my comment on that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Lori and Tim's comments, considering the budget. I, I would like to hear from the department heads. I think it gives us a, a feel for, for what they want and, and what their needs are moving forward. With, to quote Chris, with that being said, it's gonna be a tough budget year, and I don't know what we're gonna be able to grant, if anything, but back to Tim's comments about the school, I'm not saying that we're telling them to close the schools, I think that's a school board decision, not a board of supervisors. And it's their, their money and their budget, and they need to deal with it and not pack that off on the board of supervisors. Thank you.
I agree with everything everyone said. I do agree, having these, and I'm fine with meeting with all department heads, because I like hearing from them too. But it needs to be after Chris has already drafted his. That gives us a direction to point to, and quite frankly, the money, there's, the money's not gonna be there to do a lot of things. So if we have Chris's budget already, that gives us something to read, have points to go to, and have, we'll have a little bit more knowledgeable, be able to make knowledgeable assumptions instead of empty promises.
Mr. James?
I agree with what Nick said, I think we'd be better off to wait till we got the budget. And then here for me, our department's at that point too.
I think it was, so.
To go in.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
We'd have a direction to go in, once we did hear from them.
What I'm hearing here, then, is a complete consensus of the board, that when, in, in our February meeting, if there's something that you all want to address to the board in a work session. But it's not our budget until after you guys get through, we don't need to be micromanaging. And then if we need to meet with some of these department heads, but when, when they come to the, and I, and I'm gonna say this again, I mean, that's their job to answer the phone calls and do. If they've got a budget request that they need this or that, we don't need to sit there for fifteen minutes that we do this, this, and this. Each one of us knows what the boards are doing. We just need to hear what their, our budget request is and why, you know, that, that's my part on that, so. Thank you, Brian. I think that if there's something that y'all need to do or address us in the next work session in February, I think it's consensus of the board to talk onto that. But up until that point, it's not our budget until you give it over. Ms. Smith, you have something?
I just have a quick thought for Mr. Whitlow and, and the board, of course. I would, I, I just stated, you know, to have a work session on our capital budget, on the capital side, I think that that is something that we need to put some attention to, even before Chris brings his budget, because I think it's gonna require, hopefully, that, that Chris will bring some, you know, a capital budget that attempts to prioritize need, you know, over want, for sure. But I think that we need to understand about the capital needs, that will instruct decisions on borrowings and debt service, that comes right off the top of the budget. So, you know, our capital budget needs to be a meaningfully implemented part of our budget negotiations. And so, Mr. Whitlow, I don't know if you feel that that could be appropriate before your budget presentation, or what your desire would be?
Sure, thank you, Ms. Smith, Chairman, members of the board. This feedback's very helpful for us. I think what we can do, and what we've done in the past, in previous years, when we look at the February twentieth is the regular board meeting, and then we have that Thursday, the twenty-second, as the work, as the work session, Mr. Chairman. And so, on that February twenty-second, I think what we can do is take a, a good look at our capital with the board, as well as things like health insurance, we'll know more then, that way the board will have, almost like today, you're gonna have more information there, we'll have more information by then, by, from the school system and so forth. I think it'd be, and then based on that work session, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your feedback from that session in terms of priorities and so forth will be very helpful to me and the staff that following week, because it's that following week that we'll build the budget. We're building it all along, but we'll finalize the budget to present on March the fifth. And then to the other points regarding some of these other work sessions in March, where you'll have time to look through the budget and, and mark through it, as Mr. Mitchell had noted, and then if there's opportunity and you'd like to hear from the departments and so forth, give them an opportunity also. So I think it's doable, it's workable, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what, what you've laid out. I do think we have to be very disciplined in terms of March fifth, once the budget is presented, we will recommend an advertised tax rate. It will be very important that the board, I guess, moves forward at that point for us to advertise the tax rate. That doesn't mean that's gonna be the adopted tax rate. We can go down, we can't go above, so we will be very diligent in that. That thirty-day time period's very important, because we, we do have to have this reassessment hearing advertised and so forth for thirty days, and it's important to the citizens, they need that. And, and, and so this year, our citizens have two public hearings of opportunities to review the county budget, to review the proposed tax rates, both on March the twenty-sixth and April the ninth. And if, on April the ninth, if the board, after the conclusion of that hearing, is still not ready to adopt a budget, Mr. Chairman, there are other days in the week, there's that Thursday, the eleventh, that the board can come back at that point. And I think by that Thursday, April the eleventh timeframe, that's, that's about the time the board adopted the budget last year. That gives Margaret and Susan, should give them ample time, I'm looking at Margaret, I know Margaret said she, she can go. I think she's, she'll be ready, and I think Susan will be too. So this, this is helpful, and, and Mr. Chairman, if it's consensus of the board that we stick to this schedule, then we, we can do so with the modifications that's been discussed.
I think so.
Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
I think we're gonna need numbers, Chris, on the, the tax rate range for purposes of having the, the, the equalization conversations.
Most certainly.
And we're gonna need to know the value of a penny, because it is going to change dramatically.
Most certainly, all that will be baked in with both the presentation and as we lead up to the budget. Yes, ma'am, certainly.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
And I think it's important that this budget, the 22nd date, is dedicated to the budget work session. Unless something, uh, major comes up, we don't be, need to deal with anything else. We need to deal with the budget. Don't need to, no bunch of meetings with anybody else on that.
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, we, uh, let's just take us a five-minute break. We're a little bit behind. We still, I don't know how long Ms. Cooper's presentation's going to take. I don't want to rush anything, but, uh, I don't know what, what the weather's doing outside yet either or not. Five minutes, we'll come back.
Designated growth area.
And some zoning ordinance. Just an update.
Keep track of that.
Is this the, uh, presentation we just had?
Yes, sir.
Cool.
Okay, we're circling back here on a couple of meetings that we had, starting in April, that a couple of you either weren't here for or weren't on board yet. Um, and then we had another one in October. And this is just tying up some of those loose ends and hopefully wrapping up that conversation today. But before we dive into the zoning ordinance, I wanted to just take a couple of minutes, um, at Chairman Thompson's request from Tuesday night, and just give a quick recap on what a DGA is, and what a village is, and how they're, you know, the same and not too different. Um, I'm going to try, for sake of time, to get through some of this stuff pretty quickly. So if you feel like I'm shorting you by any means, let me know, or if you have a question. So, again, just as a recap, a DGA is a voluntary designation, meaning that a locality can choose to designate these areas. It is not a requirement by any means, um, but it is permitted through state code. They are recognized by the state. So, once a locality adopts one, it is state-recognized, particularly for transportation. These open up opportunities for state funding for transportation, as we talked about on Tuesday. Um, now, a DGA versus a village, they're, in our case, synonymous for the same thing in most cases. Um, so in the 2007 comprehensive plan, which is our active plan now, and you should have a couple of printouts in front of you, and I highlighted the stuff that I'm about to talk about, that 2007 plan identified seven villages and two unincorporated towns. So, when we say village here in the county, we're talking about those seven identified villages, um, and you also have a map in front of you. There was one in every district. Um, so Callaway, Snow Creek, Burnt Chimney, Union Hall, Pin Hook, thinking of some more. Anyway, they're, they're in front of you. Um, they're also on the screen. Um, and then, Farum and Westlake were the two that were identified as unincorporated towns. Um, so since that time in 2007, that is when the board said, as a body, we are recognized, recognizing these as villages. This is where commerce is happening, or would likely happen. This is where we're going to concentrate development. Now, of course, when we say development, we're not talking Roanoke or Richmond. This is much slower pace, much, much more spread out, but development nonetheless. So, as so far back as 2007, we have kind of decided, these are the areas we're looking at. Since that time, we have taken Farum and, and created a, a village plan for that. We have created, of course, for Union Hall, um, in 2014, revamped that this week. And then, we actually combined Westlake and Hills Ford together. Um, so some of these here, this is a map that you should have in front of you. Um, I just want to call out that all of the DGAs that we have, except for the 220 North Corridor, which is sort of an outlier, are, they are one of the designated villages. All of the villages we have are not DGAs, yet. They could be one day, they could never be. Um, but I just want to make that distinction clear. So they're more or less the same thing, but here in the county, when we say village, it may not necessarily be a DGA yet. Um, let's just use Snow Creek as an example. It's a designated village in the comp plan, but it is not a DGA. It does not have a plan. It does not have a boundary. Um, does that make sense so far? Okay. Um, and just a quick call out between the difference between these two, in a nutshell, DGAs are state-recognized. They're official, they have boundaries, they're clean-cut. A village is something we coined. It's something locally designated. The state could not care less what we do here on the ground level, uh, for lack of a better description. Uh, the value of a DGA, of course, we talked a little bit about this on Tuesday, so I'll breeze through this. The point of this is to prevent, prevent sprawl, save that agricultural and farmland outside of the DGA, which makes up most of the county. Um, if you look at these areas, um, the Westlake, you can see here, if you see my mouse, i- is pretty, is definitely the biggest one. Farum actually might give it a run for its money. Union Hall is much smaller than those two. Um, and then the villages themselves, again, not the DGAs, just the villages, are a half a mile radius. So, for all intents and purposes, they're a very small area of the county. For the most part, um, we're, we steer clear of, um, developing in, in those areas. So, they prevent sprawl, they save that ag land, they consolidate infrastructure utilities. That's where we can focus our efforts on broadband, cellphone coverage, increased water and sewer. Um, this also encourages efficient land use, like we talked about. Consolidating your development as best you can, so it's not popping up randomly or sporadically without that infrastructure that you really need. Um, and lastly, a good thing about DGAs or villages, is they create a sense of community, um, much like Mr. Tatum was talking about with these elementary schools. When a rural locality that's as big as Franklin County, you might have a town or two, but then the identity can stop from there, but you might have these crossroads areas that very much function as if they were on their own. They're not, but they have an identity all their own. Um, so that's another value to DGAs that's less, um, financial or official. Any questions about DGAs? I, I went through that pretty quickly. And I just want to touch to the point of a, of a village plan or an area plan, it doesn't become a DGA without that. Um, we have to make that plan, we have to set that boundary. The village plans have other benefits. You can set policy for that specific area. You can do, um, goals and strategies, like we talked about on Tuesday. Um, but really, the, the main purpose of that is, it's the driving, the factor for getting that village, whichever one it is, um, as an official DGA. Any questions on DGAs before we get to zoning ordinance?
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Okay. Um, before we get, I lied to you. Before we go fully into the zoning ordinance, there's one more thing I want to touch on. Uh, we started this in April, which was some time ago at this point. This is just going to be a reminder. Um, so the comprehensive plan is our overarching kind of goal. It's our vision statement, um, in conjunction with our area plans. Again, this is your vision. This is high-level, this is where you want to be, you're daydreaming, uh, you know, 10 years from now, if we had all the money in the world and all the staff, what would be, what would we be? Um, then, in order to make that happen, you need some boots-on-the-ground implementation. You need some ways to make that happen. Um, and we have a variety of things. That's not specific to this locality, but generally speaking, how to make a comp plan happen are a few different tools. The most known or widely used would be your zoning and subdivision ordinances, your capital improvement plans, certainly, and other budgets, strategic and work plans, your official map, um, which is more or less your zoning map, but it also could include roads, um, where your facilities are, where your fire stations are. And then, lastly, programs, um, land use, programs for tax rates, um, maybe social services, those sorts of things. We're going to focus on zoning and subdivision tonight. Um, again, we started this in April. I just wanted to bring this back full circle, so we kind of are reminded of where this started. Um, and this is also from April, so I don't want anyone to be scared about this schedule. Um, so what we said way, way back in April, when we very first started this conversation, is that we had a lot of ongoing efforts that we needed to wrap up. Those were the two village plans that we just finished on Tuesday, um, and then the comprehensive plan, which is now well underway. That really needs to, if not being fully done, it really needs to, um, have some momentum and some policy in there before you start a full zoning rewrite. And the reason that is, um, your comprehensive plan sets the guideposts for what that zoning ordinance should say. If you don't really have that, it's not that your zoning ordinance would be arbitrary, um, but the reason you have a zoning ordinance is to implement the comp plan, and ours is so out of date. So we wanted to get that started first and then head over to the zoning ordinance. So I just wanted to remind everyone of, of what our, um, projections were back in April, and how those have shifted just a little bit as we move forward through this presentation, um, just as we made decisions on a timeline and, and our next steps. So we originally thought that we would wrap up those village plans in fall. Um, as you know, we just finished them up Tuesday. Um, so things can get a little off-schedule pretty quickly, and it does have a domino effect. We're so far on track with the comp plan. We're doing that in-house with the help of our PDCs. Um, we're at the very beginning. We have to go through a whole public engagement phase, um, but luckily, we're doing that, that in-house. Um, so as long as I can lock my door and, um, hunker down, we should stay on track. But if not, I'll certainly keep you all updated. Um, and then we also scheduled ourselves loosely to maybe go out for RFP back in, in the fall, and we didn't make that. So we're here now. So again, I'm just bringing this up to remind us of the, the loose timelines that we set for ourself, just as we keep going and, um, make decisions. Any questions on this timeline and how it's changed, or why?
Anyone? No, ma'am?
Okay. We're going to get to the good stuff now. So, uh, some, uh, some reminders on where the zoning ordinance started, um, and sort of where we're at now. So the zoning ordinance was first adopted in 1988. Um, it has not been comprehensively rewritten since that adoption, meaning no one has come in, or staff hasn't sat down with it, um, compared it against code requirements, best practices, modern uses, modern requirements. We have had amendments over time. Um, these are just some of the key highlights. These are not all of them. We've had some minor ones, but these are those big, uh, big players that we've had, landscaping, solar, short-term rentals. Um, but from beginning, you know, front page to ending page, it has not been looked at in its entirety. However, the subdivision ordinance has. That was first adopted in 1979, and it got a nice update in 2019. Um, I will make one distinction. It doesn't matter for us, but I just want you all to know, a subdivision ordinance is required by the Code of Virginia. A subdiv, or zoning ordinance is not. Um, so it's not necessarily the worst thing in the world that we haven't gotten to it, but we're certainly overdue. Um, so we
Stephanie, by cave, by caved, what is the definition of a subdivision?
The, the division of land. Um, I think it's orderly, the orderly division of land, and it's how big, um, the, the lots would be, or what shape they could be, what the, um, if, there are certain, I'm rambling right now. There are certain, um, requirements in Code of Virginia for family subdivisions, time requirements, um, if they have to meet all of the different termini or road requirements. Can you have private roads? Can they be public? Are bonds required? That's the definition of a subdivision ordinance. It's how land is subdivided, not used, just cut up and, and re-divvied. Does that make sense?
Does it include, uh, infrastructure?
No, it's, they will talk about roads, but it doesn't talk about, um, like, if, let's say, water or sewer. That would be the use of the land, not, not the land itself just being 2D on a map. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Um, so anything like that would come in through the zoning ordinance, or, um, citing agreements in certain instances. If it's not something that's zoned, solar would be a good example of that, um, or data centers. We don't have those here, but those things aren't really controlled through the subdivision ordinance. It's just how you take a piece of paper and you cut it up. That's basically what the subdivision ordinance is. And then other measures come into place for your utilities and whatever else you're using the land for.
If a subdivision has covenants, you know, homeowner restrictions, we can't override or do anything?
No, totally. It's a civil matter. Mm-hmm. We are out of that completely.
Okay. Does that bring up anything from, anyone?
All right. So just, again, quick overview of what we're doing tonight. Um, we're, we're hoping to, to have the zoning ordinance update to get us a brand-new ordinance. We're talking front-to-back, totally rewritten, um, readable, modern, uh, easy to understand. Ours is heavy with legalese. Um, there's some conflicting language in places, to be candid with you. Um, it's not user-friendly. If, if you've never read a zoning ordinance, and you read ours, Godspeed and good luck to you. Um, and so, an, an update is, is warranted for many, many reasons. This would start with securing a consultant, um, whether that's through an RFP or a cooperative procurement, um, but that's the first step. And then, from that point on, basically from contract forward, this process usually takes about two years. That could be give or take. Um, it depends on if we delay it, if, um, scheduling conflicts delay it, how much work we want out of that, um, but two years is a good benchmark. Uh, of course, the timeline and specific tasks would be, uh, detailed and talked about after we've gotten a consultant on board, um, but that's just a good number to go from. And we can talk about the general tasks or phases that would be included, and we'll get to that shortly. So really quickly, and I'll pause here for a beat, if you have any questions. I don't know how many of you look at this on a day-to-day basis. This is the zoning map. So all of this gray area, or black, is non-zoned. So anything below this line, the zoning ordinance does not apply. The subdivision ordinance applies, erosion and sediment control, um, stormwater, et cetera. It's just the subdivision ordinance itself does not apply beyond this line here. Um, you can see this white, that's all A1. That's agriculture. That's our only agriculturally-zoned district at the time. Uh, at this time, some people have, you know, A1, A2, A3, or different, they'll break it out in different categories, but we just have the one, um, and we are predominantly A1 in the zoned area, as you can see. You can see a little bit of R1 and some PCD, um, RPD around the lake a bit, um, but majority is A1. Any questions on zoning districts as they are now, or boundaries? And then these hashed lines here, these are our overlays, um, which I don't want to get off the rails and talk about overlays tonight, but those essentially lay on top of a zoning map. It doesn't negate anything that's underneath it. It more or less adds on to it. So everything underneath that is now called a base, uh, base district. That still applies. Um, so for example, in this overlay right here along 220, what that overlay adds is additional signage or landscaping requirements. Everything else stays the same. So that's how overlays work. We have two currently, the 220 North, and then one in Westlake. So if no questions on this, I'll keep popping along here. Okay. Real quick on the Clarion work. Um, Mr. James, you should have a copy in front of you, hopefully, of this here. Everyone got this back in October, maybe sooner than that. Um, it's coming to you now. At the last work session that we had, um, I think you all asked staff to give you a little bit of, of a more debrief on what that Clarion work was and what it included. Um, it was done in 2010, so it's about 13 years old. Um, at that time, the county worked with Clarion to assess the zoning ordinance that was in effect at the time and draft some recommended revisions. I'm sure that at that point in time, they did look at code or modern best practices, but again, that was 13 years ago. Um, just for reference, code changes every year, um, let alone, certainly, we're living in a very different world than it was in 2013. Um, this work included a few things. It did include some new zoning districts and additions or revisions to some of our regulations. This was 100% advisory. It was not adopted in any way, shape, or form. Um, no amendments at all were made to the zoning ordinance. So at this rate, we can call this more or less an analysis, and it didn't get further than that. What staff would recommend is that the, the zoning ordinance update process, as part of that scope of work, include this Clarion work in background tasks. Um, and what I mean by that is whoever we bring on, in whatever way, shape, or form that, that that firm does this, they will look at some background documentation to get context for where we're at. The first things they'll look at are the comp plan, going back to what does that comp plan say, so that we can make sure the zoning ordinance makes that happen. Village plans, area plans, they could look at the economic development strategic plan, if that were adopted, any str, other strategic plans we have. We could include this in that assessment and have them look at this as well. Um, so not necessarily a separate task order, but in that background research, they can include this. That would be staff's recommendation, so it's not forgotten.
Can I stop you for just a second?
Sure.
Something that just came to mind for the supervisors, uh, that don't have zoning. Is this the time that you want to look at that?
Nope.
Nope. Yep. Yep. So, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that, is this the time that we need to look at that? And to bring that up, you know, we've got one no and two yeses, so.
So we have two questions for you all before we leave today. That's one of the two, um, that I was going to say
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. No, that's okay.
Let me just shut up.
It's good. Um, so we'll get back to that. Um, your answers will probably stay the same, but, um, we'll get to that at the end, just so we can reach some sort of consensus, so we can, um, decide what we're going to do next. So hold that thought. Um, a couple more things on the Clarion work. A few things have changed. The two big ones are the population. At the time that that work was done, Franklin County hit a boom, um, and we had a, a And we had a, a span of years that the population really spiked up. Since that time, it has gone down. I don't want to say rapidly and consistently, but pretty consistently and steadily, it has gone down. So the recommendations that might be in here may have aligned more with expected population growth and not something that might be declining. So that's a huge change there. And then the other huge one is the comprehensive plan relevance. At the time that this document was done, the comp plan was more or less brand-new. It was three years old. It's now, I don't, I can't do the math right now. It's old and it's outdated, and we're currently working on our new one. So this document is really aligned with a comp plan that's one foot out the door, as of today. What has not changed is the rural character call-out. This, this analysis really brings out the emphasis on rural character, what it means, that it needs to be planned for carefully and acknowledged at every point possible. And then that different areas have different needs. Follows the same vein there. What is needed in Westlake is very different than what's needed on the outskirts of Faram or in Snow Creek. What's needed along 220 is very different than what's needed along 40. So that also has not changed, and I don't think anybody expects that to ever change. No matter how much development we come in, we will always have pockets of the county that have very different needs than other pockets. So five key themes were in that document. Tailor regulations to different areas, just discuss that. Protect rural character, we just talked about that. Raise the bar for development quality. Write your regulations in a way that it invites in what you want. If you want it to be, if you want it to look a certain way, we need to write regulation that way. If we want to just get anyone in here as quick as possible, we need to write regulation that way. So making sure that the regulations that we write are, are indicative of the development that, that we want in here. Modernize the review procedures. Meaning where possible, maybe make them a little more administrative and less discretionary. Less going to the planning commission and the board of supervisors, especially in a, in a market like this. Developers want to do it quick, and they want to do it as quick as possible. And then lastly, make the zoning ordinance user-friendly. These things, albeit they were done in 2010, have not changed. Staff agrees with all of them. The only thing that might be different is the ways that they wanted to approach these items might look differently now, but the key themes themselves are still very much alive. And we would expect any consultant that comes on would, would certainly probably have these key themes working in the back of their head as well. Any questions on the Clarion work?
Is one of the things Stephanie embedded in this conformity?
Tell me a little more. With what's around it, so?
The, the, the look at how we're, you know, when we talk about raise the bar for development quality and protecting the rural character, you know, are, are we gonna be looking for that, you know? I don't know if I'm explaining myself right, so just hold that question.
Okay, like enforcement conformity, or like in Westlake, everything would have consistency? Yes.
Yes.
Now, if we're talking consistent development visually, that's a different ballgame.
No, no, no.
That's, that's very different, and we have to have certain things in place to do that. But treating every application the same, holding each developer to the same standard, certainly, that's what we're hoping for. What's maybe good in one area of the county should be maybe good in another part, unless it warrants something very specific and different. So in that regard, yes.
That's fine.
Okay, if it hasn't answered you.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
So, real quick, this is a, an example of a zoning ordinance update. This is the town of Rocky Mount's example. They're going through this right now. My guess is they're, they might be halfway through. They could be a little further along. And what we have here, this is a two-year process, multi-phases. And I'm just gonna go over this in this specific example, knowing that if a different consultant were to come on board, or if we were to go the same route, it may look a little bit different for us, but generally speaking, this is how an update would likely go. Phase one would be analysis and public engagement. That's fact-finding, that's data gathering, knowing what's going on, what's the appetite. So again, you would look at relevant documents. What are your comp plans saying? What are your village plans saying? Strategic plans, any previous work like this. This would also be a time that the consultant would compare our ordinance to code and let us know where we're either completely out of alignment, or where we could be a little bit better. For example, maybe our fees are out of alignment. Maybe we have timelines that used to be in alignment with code that are now too long or too short. They would let us know all of that stuff. Another key component here, which will be huge for this county since it's been so long, is public engagement. This will be a key piece of the update, same with the, the comprehensive plan. This could include a survey, stakeholder groups, focus groups, open houses, a variety of things. This would take a couple of months' process, I'm sure. But it would be imperative that this happens. And we can talk a little bit, if we don't run out of time, about what that might mean to you all, if you have any indication now, what you want that to look like, or what you absolutely are must-haves. Phase two would be the content of the plan, of the ordinance itself. So this would be drafting the new, the new regulations bit by bit. Typically, you'll do work sessions with planning commission. Rocky Mount chose to do joint work sessions. I'm gonna go out on a limb and suggest that might not be the most productive for this group to do joint. That's a lot of people in one room. But localities do it. So that phase two would be drafting of the content, and then periodic review by one body or another. This could also include periodic updates to the board, if you weren't involved in those nitty-gritty, bi-monthly or monthly work sessions. And then phase three, the last one, is more or less adoption. This would also include some last-minute revisions. There would be another opportunity for public engagement at an open house. But this would really be fine-tuning, buttoning up any little errors, and then taking it to adoption. Any questions about a potential schedule, or how this works? Or what steps are included?
Mr. Chairman, may I have a quick statement? Stephanie, I think you and I have talked about this before, but I would really like to see things that have high priority, like our agricultural, our farmers, and, and A1. I think it's gonna be real important that we have structured work sessions to make sure, and, and make, not just a one-off, but I want to make sure that we're hearing from our agricultural landowners and farmers to make sure their voices are being heard, and that the work that we do is that we can reflect our very best, given what they're telling us.
So, again, this is a crystal ball. When I was in consulting before here, what, what we would do is we would do just that. We would have stakeholder groups, and every firm does this a little differently, but it's more or less the same. You would have stakeholder groups of, of centralized brains. So you would get farmers together. That's one group. No one else is allowed. You would have maybe attorneys, bankers, real estate folks. They're sort of along the same channel there. Maybe you'd have business owners or other economic development-inclined folks. You could have, even here, maybe a focus group that's, that's only county staff, maybe different departments. So that's something that we would certainly, not tonight, but throughout this process of creating that scope, we would need to hear from you all what groups you want. That would be an absolute must. And then beyond that, who is invited to those groups? That's the other key piece. Those groups don't function well if they're open-ended and, and open invitation. You really want to be, be mindful about who you're inviting to that. You want to get more or less experts in that topic, or that have a stake in the game. Not saying that if you own property here, you don't have a stake. But if you're an active farmer, or you, you own several businesses, or you've developed a large amount of land, you have a little bit either more knowledge because you've been through the process, or you, you have expertise in a certain field, and you know it's working and what isn't. So that would be a necessity from where I'm standing. And we would flesh that out later down the line, on again, what those groups are and who's in them.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I, I would just say, you know, looking at working with existing groups where we can to, like the Ag Committee. It's already set up. It's already an existing group that has kind of vetted a lot of agricultural concerns and agricultural issues. And so, in cases where we can, I think we would try to utilize those existing groups, in addition to the Planning Commission, Chamber of Commerce, you know, some of those kind of existing groups.
But you wouldn't preclude, like, a group of farmers? That's, and, I mean, because all you have is representative on the ag group. They're important, and they need to have their own work session, but I want to make sure that we're having, like, an open community discussion for our working farmers.
Sure, and, and I think she had explained that we would have a series of various open houses and things as well through the process. I think the other point I was gonna make was that through it all, we have two, really only two required public hearings as part of the process, but we anticipate much more public input and public participation in the process. But from code perspective, it's really only two required public hearings, which is the planning commission and board, yeah.
I would be open to any suggestions. I probably got the largest German Baptists in my area of how to get them to the table. You know, I, I have a good rapport with a couple of their preachers. I guess I could go to them as the leader and try to encourage them to come. If you got any ideas?
I, I don't want to get us too off-topic, but I'll share this. Before I came on board, before I left Berkeley Group, we were working on the Richmond County Comprehensive Plan. And they have a huge, I don't think they're German Baptist, I should remember. I don't think it's Amish either. It's not them either.
Who is this? Where at?
It's in Richmond County.
Richmond?
Not Richmond, Richmond County, way out on the coast. I'll think of it.
That's only out of banks, that's?
It's on the other side of Chesapeake Bay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the only way we could get to them was the, the planning director went to them personally. And invited them.
Talked to them individually?
No, no, they didn't. They, there were a couple that came to our open, open houses. We didn't have a specific group for those people, for that group. It was a smaller population. It was a smaller community, but very, very active. Almost every farm stand there was owned by them, all of the garden centers. So they were small but mighty. So she went to, to some of those, you know, leaders and elders specifically, and invited them, and, and they came out to the open house. So that might be what you do. That's been my only experience. I can peruse the internet and see if other, if other communities that have these, these groups, any ideas?
When we get to this point, I'll need your help.
Sure, okay. Sounds good. Any, any other questions about the schedule? Stakeholder groups? What an open house is?
Stephanie, I'll just add a concern. I don't like VDOT's open houses.
I've never, I, I don't, I think we have two, two VDOT's open houses, like, here, and it's a vegetable, and I'm talking fruit. We'll be totally different.
I mean, I just don't like to have boards set up around the room, and citizens just come in and just walk through and depend on somebody to come up, talk to them. I like a more concerted effort where people are seated. They're hearing a message at the same time, and they're able to converse.
Right.
And everybody can hear what the questions are, what the concerns are. Because the ones I've been to, I don't know if VDOT does any variation, but I just don't like that casual come in and just look at the boards and leave.
No, and we, we've done those. So for example, the most recent one we did was for Union Hall at the tail end. After you've done that, sitting down at the table and playing with the blocks and, you know, asking them really what, what's going on, divulge your, you know, biggest secrets. After you've done that, at the tail end, you might have one where you just walk in and look at some boards, and there's someone there. But these would be more hands-on. We're probably talking small groups. Maybe they're interacting truly, I'm being literal here, with blocks, you know, that, that is more, it's not a game, but it's a little more interactive than just listening to someone talk. And you say, what's your biggest issue? And they don't know where to start. They don't know how to convey it. So I would envision that these, these open houses would be a little more interactive. I'm not talking, you know, all day lunch or anything, but maybe two to three hours. And again, it's not coming to look at boards, because at that point, you wouldn't have boards to look at. There would be nothing.
Thank you.
So it would be much more detailed than, than that. Not to come after VDOT, but two, two different kinds. Yeah, two, two different kinds. I wouldn't expect anything less than something hands-on.
And, and I would just add there that we would welcome the opportunity for any board members that has community meetings. You know, we've had some of those in the past, and so staff would be happy to attend those and speak on specific topics. We've, we've done that with several board members in the past, and so that could be another avenue, kind of, to, to reach out. Kind of town hall-type meeting. And that could just be one of the topics of discussion, would be the, you know, upcoming zoning changes.
Okay, did this spark any more questions at this point? All right, a couple of potential changes that could come out of this. I'll disclaimer here, this is not an exhaustive list. This is not all that would change, but these are some of, just some examples of what, when we say new ordinance, what we're really talking about. This could mean everything from setbacks changing, minimum lot sizes changing, community design standards, lighting, landscaping, parking minimums. That's a big one right now. It's a huge best practice to re-look at parking minimums across the nation. They're essentially way too large. So that's what community design standards mean, when you go to a, to an area and you look around. Besides the use of those buildings, how does it look? How does it feel? Process improvements. I touched on this vaguely a few slides ago. Well, when we're talking about process improvements, how can we make it easier, not just for the constituents, but for staff, for planning commission, for the board? If there is something that, for example, we see come through for a special use permit constantly, maybe that's a use that could be by right with supplemental regulations. And then that makes it a little bit easier, but if we have the same conditions imposed every time, if those are just built into the ordinance, we still get what we want, and they get it a little bit faster. So when we talk about process improvements, that's one example. And then there are, of course, some things that we already do that are probably ahead of some of our neighbors. Maybe our site plan process is quicker. We already have some administrative review there, but there's probably some room for improvement throughout the ordinance. I've touched on supplementary regulations a little bit, but I'll dive into that. What that means is you have uses, and you all know what I'm about to say. You have them by right, or you have them as a special use. What supplementary regulations can do, and we do have some, but they could certainly be strengthened, is if you have a use, again, that you see come before you a lot, and you always impose similar conditions, instead of doing that, what you could do is create supplementary regulations that apply every time. So it's still a by-right use, but they must meet those criteria in order to do the use, or they don't do the use. So supplementary regulations could be included for short-term rentals, accessory dwelling units, outdoor storage, marinas, townhomes, apartment buildings. You can add supplementary regulations onto just about anything. Not everything warrants them, but again, every locality will be a little bit different in their supplementary regulations. It's really all about what development you're seeing in your community, what your concerns are, what you battle the most. That will change from place to place. So that's what those are called. Zoning use matrix, or revisions to permitted uses. We have a lot of uses. It's very outdated. It's quite archaic, the way that we have it. Everything is very specific. What the, what the best practice is now is to streamline those a bit, have broad categories. So, for example, instead of having florist, pet shop, laundromat, bookstore, it's small-scale retail. That's what it is, because really, they're no different than, one is not inherently different than the other. So shortening that use of lists, list of uses. Similar to what we have in our REP district up at Summit View. That's a great example of what we have going there, broad categories. That way, the zoning administrator doesn't have to comb through a long list and say, where does this fit? Because chances are, we will get something yearly that doesn't fit anywhere, because it's just too specific, the way it's written now. And that's just how they were written in 1988, but a lot has changed since, since then. And when we say zoning use matrix, that's just a nice way to look at it. So instead of being in a list format, it's in a chart. It's much more user-friendly. Someone can go, I want to develop in Franklin County. I want to build apartments. In what district can I do it in? They can go to one piece of paper instead of, you know, 20. So that's what that means. That would also fall under the process improvements as well. Two more things here. The last one is the, the, probably the one warranting the most discussion, so I'll breeze over the second-to-last one. Overlay districts. This also might be something that changes. Right now, we have two. Does Union Hall need one? Is there some other area of 220 that would warrant one? That's something that could also be discussed as part of the scope of work. And then lastly, one potential change that I'll call out here that may bear, bear some discussion is the boundary of the zoned area. What is zoned and what isn't? Is that something that you all want to dive into? Is it something you want to leave alone? Again, that's one of the two questions we have for you. So before we get into those, I'll pause here and entertain any questions you have regardless of, of what they're about.
The store on this end, Jameson?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, are you good?
Yes ma'am, I'm good.
All right, number one, all of this information, like I said, we started this conversation in April. I know two of you here this evening were not there for that meeting. We also touched on this in October and then we're here tonight. With all of the information you've heard throughout that time and mostly this evening, does the board feel comfortable with this information? And are you ready to take the next step, which would be securing, securing a consultant? Again, we have two methods to do that. We can go R F P, which is lengthy, it involves an interview process, you're all familiar with that. We also have the opportunity to use cooperative procurement, which is, we would secure the consultant through an established agreement. Those three months, give or take, much, much quicker, no interview process with that. Any questions? Steve, do you want to add anything about cooperative procurement?
I think the thing there is those are established contracts with other localities that we have the ability to, what we'd say, piggyback on and not have to go through a lengthier process. So there are a few of those opportunities out there that we could utilize consultants through that process. And, and she mentioned Rocky Mount earlier, that's the process they used in Rocky Mount and I believe Pennsylvania County, just as two local examples, use that process.
Are you talking about the P D Cs? The P D Cs?
No ma'am, so just as an example, I'll pick Augusta County, Virginia could develop a contract with a consultant. And in that contract, they could put a clause that says, any other Virginia locality can also utilize the same contract. So some places do that more than others, there's some opportunities that we have for that. And so we're aware of a couple that we could use that approach. Basically, you just get in negotiation with that vendor for that same sort of contract that they adopted in that other locality. So that, it, it's just a little more flexible. So they, the initial locality went through that longer process to, to identify the consultant. It just kind of saves us the time from, from having to duplicate that process. But we still have the option of putting out an R F P and getting proposals from people all over the country if, if we want. Or, like I said, we also have the option in some cases to do the cooperative procurement. It's, it's just another legal way we can do it in Virginia.
I suppose with the big star there, that's what staff has recommended.
That's what, that's what we would recommend, yes.
Are there any grants or anything to help with this that we are, that you all are aware of?
No sir, we've, I've shaken those trees, I haven't been able to, to really find anything to, to help. There, there, there are some things, and we've utilized with Virginia Housing, there's some things that's very specific to housing. And we're utilizing some of those efforts with the comp plan, but for the zoning ordinance, it's, it's much, much more difficult to find any kind of grant funding out there for that.
Do we have any idea of the cost?
We know general terms.
That's good.
Really that, and you might be getting to that, really that depends on the scope. So one big factor, for instance, is the number of meetings we want the consultant to be at and participate in. So every time we have them come and participate, hold an open house meeting, hold, you know, whatever kind of meeting in person, that, that obviously adds to the cost. So scope, scope will dictate a lot of what those costs are. I think in, in magnitudes, you know, you can probably assume that it's, it's probably all of $150,000 to, to, to get there. Maybe more, maybe less, depending on the, the final scope that's worked out.
And I would, if I may, Mr. Chern, I'll just add, and then Mr. Carter's here and Mr. Sandy, we, we do have those funds already set aside in, in the capital account for the zoning ordinance rewrite. And so if, if we get into the process and a lot of times it's spread over two or three years, if we feel in a couple of years, there may need to be some additional to wrap it all up, we can work into that with our C I P. But those funds have been set aside and are budgeted.
The answer my question.
Okay.
So Chris, I mean, there's no possibility to get the P D Cs involved? Do they, will they not touch the zoning piece?
That, that's a great question.
Because I'm willing to go to bat with Roanoke Allegheny.
That, that's a great question, Ms. Smith. And the fact that you sit on Roanoke Allegheny, I think Mr. Tatum sits on West Piedmont and maybe Mr. Mitchell may will sit on West Piedmont. I think he's gonna attend a few meetings. But, but, but that being said, we, we certainly can reach out to them like we have with the comprehensive plan to push on them. Maybe there's some components of the work program. My, my sense is, and I'm looking at, at, at planning staff, because they know their capabilities better than I do, you know, their specific staffs. I'm not exactly sure if the two P D Cs have completed a, a zoning ordinance or, you know, rewrites. Maybe they've completed some of the components, but maybe not necessarily the comprehensive rewrite of it.
And I was gonna say, I think what they've done in my experience is small towns.
Yeah.
Very small scopes, very, I think, I don't know that they have the capacity to, to do what we're.
So we may not get the deliverable that would be what we would desire.
That's correct.
And Chris is right, we have engaged both of them actually to assist us with the comprehensive plan and I think that's, that's more in their wheelhouse, I think.
Okay.
And I think it's probably more just the staffing thing, it's, it's really the issue we have is, is we just don't really have the staff to, to do the entire rewrite. Obviously, Stephanie and Lisa are gonna be heavily involved, but to, to do the everyday and the, the heavy lifting, it's, it's really, we feel we need the consultant to do that.
I know, I stand ready to, to go to bat for you guys. I know you've got good relationships with the working staff at the P D Cs.
I think where they maybe could help us is, is in some of that public engagement.
Sure.
Process, as I said, that when we talk about consultant, I think that's where you're gonna see most of the cost.
Sure.
A, a big part of the cost is every time they have to come from Richmond, Harrisonburg, wherever they are, to, to physically be at meetings, that's where you end up seeing more of those costs. And so that's probably an area they could really help us, you know.
Just let me know, we're trying to get more county resources directed from Roanoke Allegheny. And I'd love to take some requests forward for Franklin County.
I, I think that could be, that could be an area, in addition to the comp plan assistance is, you know, help us with public involvement, public engagement.
That's great.
And whether that's a survey or helping, you know, logistically with meetings and so forth, I think that could be.
Well, just keep me posted.
Okay.
All right, with this question, you want some feedback? Do we need, is it a consensus or do we have to do a vote? On any decision here?
I, I, I think, and I don't know what Mr. Sandy would say, I think the consensus here, you know, if there's consensus on cooperative procurement, that gives us guidance and, and we can move forward there.
Yep, and I think the bigger question is.
Everybody shaking, I think you got a consensus.
Okay, hey, progress.
I think you got a consensus.
Were you gonna say something?
Well, I think that the bigger issue, and I think you just answered it there, is, is are we ready to move forward? And so I think that's, that's the direction. And then the other piece was the zoning pieces. As we craft the, the scope of work with, with the potential consultant is, one of those pieces is, are we considering additional zoned areas? She maybe goes, can go back to the map or, or pull up the map, but do we, if that's one of the tasks that we want to look at and incorporate into the process is, are we changing that boundary? You know, and I think, just so you know, I think you guys, as the board of supervisors, have the ability to change that. I don't, our attorney's not here, but I think you would agree, you don't have to do a referendum, it does not have to go to vote. You have the ability to change it. Now, if you want to do a referendum to find out the consensus of, of the citizens to do it, that's one thing. But I don't think legally, I don't think you need a referendum to make any changes. And I also don't think it's an all or nothing, I don't think you have to take all of it in. If you want to take, if, if Blue Ridge District says, we, we don't want it, I think you can keep that area out. And if Snow Creek District wants it, just using those, those examples, I think you can do all or any of, if, if you want to do it. You certainly don't have to change it from what it is today. But I guess one of the big things we need to know is, is that a discussion we want to have in some form moving forward about whether or not to change that boundary line? And then I guess the secondary question would be, okay, how do you want to do that? You know, do we want to hold an open house in, in various communities to, to kind of gauge the, the community's input for that? Or do individual board members already have kind of an idea of that, that they do want to move forward in that direction?
Mr. Tatum. I, I, for my part, I'm speaking for my part, I'm not willing to put any input in on it, that's your district. And you, you know your district more than anybody else in your people with your town hall meetings. And I'm not willing to put any input into that. I think that is your, that's yours, Mr. Tatum.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and I will say this, from conversations that I've had, especially this last election cycle, going around and talking to people. If it went to a referendum, if I were a betting man, and occasionally I do, for recreational pleasure, but.
Who gets the first rabbit?
Yeah. I would say that if it was a referendum, that you would see a 90% vote no versus a 10% yes on it. And I don't think I'd be missing it by far.
Are you comfortable with making the decision yourself or would you be more comfortable with it going to a referendum?
I would be okay with it going to a referendum and letting the people speak, just so that they have a fair opportunity. I'm always in favor of a referendum to give the people the voice and the opportunity to speak for themselves. And I would, based on prior knowledge and conversations I've had with, with people in my district, I would be comfortable making decisions. But I'd be okay with a referendum as well.
I would like, when we get to the point of it, for staff to guide me on what I need to do for local town halls to educate people. Law has changed since 1988 and I think the people need to be educated on that. And instead of being stuck in a mindset of, you're not gonna tell me what I do with my land, maybe learn what, what protections and advantages zoning has to offer to them. And, you know, it wouldn't be that hard to have a night at an elementary school and then a night at another one to, to provide that education.
Would you be comfortable with making the decision your own or would you want it to go to a referendum?
I want them to have the, I'd like to see the outpouring of the community at those town hall meetings and then I would be comfortable making a decision. See who shows up and what they have to say.
Mr. Jameson?
I wouldn't feel comfortable in, in speaking for them, I would like to see a referendum.
And are you, are you okay with staff moving forward with setting up these town hall meetings to get input from your people? How do you want, how do you want to go for your district?
I've got no problem with that. Yeah, the town hall would be fine, we get, like Nick said, we'll see who turns out there. But like I said, I don't know, from that point, I, I wouldn't mind having a referendum on it.
Now, the other, Mike, you probably feel like I do and Lori, but I want your input.
No, I do, I, I.
I, I'll just have one comment, and it's not my district, but, and I think I've heard our chairman say this before, at some point in time, everybody wants zoning. At some point in time, nobody wants zoning. And I think this latest situation, we got involved with these solar farms is a prime example of offering citizens some protection moving forward in, in the unzoned areas. If they're unzoned, we have very little control or say-so over these solar farms and I don't think the general public realizes that. But I'm okay with what they want to do in their districts. I am a landowner and Farman for myself, I don't particularly want zoning.
So you're part of the 90%?
Yeah, I would be in a referendum.
I think you got the answer, they, they, all, the three unzoned, they're, they're ready for your assistance with some town hall meetings. And then the answer from there goes from the town hall meetings.
Okay.
Is that fair?
We got, I'm gonna have a problem, just like you was telling me, I got a lot of German Baptists in Blackwater area too. I don't know how, how much like I'm gonna have getting them to a town hall and it's probably not at all to a referendum, but, but a town hall maybe.
They don't bother.
I know.
An option in lieu of a referendum, I don't, I mean, if that's what you all want, of course, it's your decision. But maybe instead of that, we just do a less formal surveying method. Maybe we have these town halls and take a consensus there, whether that's a survey at that moment. But if you want that official, you know, more formal method, then obviously we could do that, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Truthfully, if you look at the turnout on some of your local elections, you might would have a larger turnout on an internet survey anyway. Just on what the turnout is. Just a thought.
I think it would have to be, you know, US mail and electronic as well. But, you know, and keep in mind too, you know, I, it's, referendums are expensive, but there, you can also do not, a non-binding referendum. Meaning that you've got the flexibility to accept it or reject the, the results.
An advisory referendum.
An advisory referendum, right. And I think that's what you all would want, I would think.
Possibly, maybe it is, you know, as we get through the process, the R F P process and public engagement and so forth, to your point. Mr. Mitchell, you know, some surveys, some informal town halls, you know, Mr. Jamison and so forth. Maybe at that point, you have a better sense of, you know, where is this going with the community? And maybe that has to be decided today or even, you know, three, four, six months from now. But, you know, as we get into the process, certainly keeping the board apprised of, okay, here, here's what we're finding out, here's what we're thinking. At that point, you know, there's no immediate, I don't think, decision today for the referendum or so forth.
Correct, yeah, I was gonna say that kind of along Mr. Mitchell's comments is, unless you hear an outcry to change it, I think our consensus would be to keep it the way it is unless we hear that. And it could be that we hear that at a town hall that, hey, we want this to change. And, and then, you know, then we look at making changes where it might be appropriate. But otherwise, it may be just, we're, we're moving forward as if it's not changing unless there's significant outcry from, from one of those communities to change it.
Is there a possibility of like with your community meeting, and I don't know the answer to this, to do some balloting? People realize that when they come, that they can actually say yea or nay and put it in a box there? I mean, I don't, is, has anything like that ever been done?
Yes.
It has?
No, I know, I know, I was involved in it in the eighties. In the eighties, and it was on the ballot. And it, it was on the ballot countywide, and these are the districts. I can even tell you what the biggest thing that was on the ballot, why the Boone District voted for it.
You're talking about on a formal general election ballot?
General, general election.
And see, that, yeah, but I'm talking about.
And you're talking about a town hall meeting, just a, just a little informal ballot at a town hall meeting, just to get the consensus.
And I don't know, I'm just throwing some ideas out.
Yeah, or even just could be a raise of hands, you know, who's in favor of changing it and who's not. You know, yeah, I think that's kind of where I would add is, you know, unless there's a big public upswell to change it. You know, we, we kind of operate on things are gonna stay the way they are as far as the zoning boundary. And just a thought.
Another option that kind of ties into this third question is of, of how much public engagement that you all want to see. Do you want to see, it's been a long time, do you want to see maybe not, you know, in Blue Ridge where you know it's a no? But maybe on the border to give them the chance to come? Maybe there's not just one or two open houses, it's a big county, maybe we have several. And that's where you take, you know, whether they, it's a paper survey, they throw it in a box and it's separate from another survey. That's just general zoning questions. There's also maybe that opportunity to take it a, as a general education tool. Because as part of this open house, if we have one, it's public engagement, that's that sit down, get your hands dirty, kind of figure out what zoning is. Part of that is learning what zoning is. Because even the folks that have lived here for 30 years in the zoned area may not understand what zoning is. So for anyone and everyone, there's going to be an educational component to it. So that might be an opportunity if you just want to expand those, bearing in mind that the more meetings we have, the price goes to. But that would be an opportunity to, to maybe ask there. But we don't have to decide that now. I, I think we could roll it into public engagement, whether that's concurrent with it as a separate task, it's like a special set of public engagement or it's rolled in to the other pieces of public engagement that we have. Staff can put our heads together and maybe come, come up with an idea and bring it back to you.
When you, Mr. Chairman, when you say public engagement. When you, Mr. Chairman, when you say public meetings, are you talking about after, with the consultants at that time?
So that would be with the consultants. Or if the PDC plan worked out and the PDC were to do our public engagement. But it would, it would be another body beyond the county that's helping us, holding our hand along with us in that public engagement at that open house or four or five open houses, however many it ends up being. That would also be the person that facilitates those stakeholder groups. Staff, also a point of having a consultant come on, even if that's help from the PDC, is to be as neutral as possible. You want an expert, we're all experts, we've done it. But you want someone that's not tied to the county to help guide. And that's, so they would definitely be guiding that public engagement. They'll be there at every single event that we have. Whether that's the stakeholder groups with ag, economic development, business owners, or that overall open house at the elementary school or the college or whatever it would be. They would be there at every one. Does that answer your question?
What I would say is, I think we need somebody at the meetings to, if it's, like you said, at the school, firehouse, whatever, that can explain to the people what zoning is.
That would be, that would, yes, we would be there, but the consultants would be there doing that, or the PDC. That outside expert would be the one leading the presentation, giving that educational speech on what zoning is, helping them understand. But that is the role of those meetings, is to explain what zoning is and then to get feedback. That would be a given. There would be no meeting where we don't give that educational piece on what zoning is. We would be asking for trouble.
Okay.
Because I can guarantee you, most people does not even know what a DGA is. Or, and they're not going to know it unless it starts to impact them at some point. It's all very educational, I think. We've got a good potential there.
And we won't catch everybody, and that's just an expectation we'll have to accept now. We won't reach everyone. But, but we'll have multiple opportunities to try to catch who we can. And hopefully those folks will then go to their neighbors and say, hey, I went to the zoning meeting and it's not so bad, or it's really terrible, you were right. However they feel about it. So we won't get everyone, but we'll try. And to that point, going back to this question three, typically you have three methods. A survey, online administered, similarly to the way that Beth did it for the economic development. Strategic plan. You have those stakeholder groups that are more or less invite only. We're talking max 15 people per group. It gets kind of wily at that point. People talking over each other, it's hard to keep them in line. That is the second piece. And then you have those open houses, again, however many we choose to have. Do you want to have one? Do you want to have one in every district? Do you want to have three spaced equidistant throughout the county? So those are your three big methods of public engagement. If there's something else that you all have seen other places or you know you want, please let us know. But that will likely be, again, whether it's through the consultant or we do get Roanoke Valley on board and we have them facilitate that. That's, those are the three, you know, options you'd be looking at. So we're bound to catch everybody some way or another.
I think I would just add website. You know, we keep information on the website to keep people involved in the process. And then at their leisure, people can look there and they can also comment and provide feedback through the website as well. So kind of a, maybe a fourth alternative for.
And I may not.
As well as the Planning Commission meetings, which, you know, they're going to have a number of work sessions over two years, kind of going through this. So all those meetings obviously are public as well.
We would want to have a point where that initial public engagement, we sort of put a bow on it so that we can start drafting those new regulations that are based on that. But there will be an open opportunity for everyone to engage throughout the whole process. But when we talk public engagement, it's a big push at the very beginning and it's very intentional and it's very specific. That doesn't mean that once that is over, there is no other choice or opportunity. But there is a very specific set of engagement at the very beginning. That's, you know, it will catch most of what we need to hear. But I've seen in the past, many ordinances that I've done, we hear something groundbreaking at the very end and we've gone back to the drawing board. Don't recommend it, you try to avoid that, which is why you have those many methods of engagement. But they'll have an opportunity the whole time. And they can always call the office. We may not answer immediately, but I know I will try. I'm happy to explain anything to anyone at any time, zoning or not. So you can tell anyone, they can call if they want to know what zoning is or what, why, or how it works. So even as people, we're a tool for public engagement throughout this whole process. I'm going to jump to two really quick. I know we've gone really over time here. Another thing that we'd like to hear from you tonight, if possible, is what level of involvement you all envision you having throughout this process? Again, typically it's a Planning Commission focus. That's who's sitting down either monthly or bi-monthly with that consultant to review those articles as they get written and sort of go line by line and talk about those changes. If that's something that you want to attend, we need to know that now. We need to build that into the scope. If you would feel comfortable with quarterly updates via a memo or maybe staff comes to you every couple of months and gives you an update in front of you at a meeting, that's also an option. But in-person presence is more costly than staff giving you periodic updates. So in order to make that scope reflective of what we want, we need to know some indication of what you're thinking, if you know that.
I already hit three said quarterly updates.
Quarterly updates.
And I hadn't heard them down this way.
It depends on what the Snow Creek District decides they want. But other than that, yes, quarterly updates, it's fine with me.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't realize that's where you were going when I nodded my head. I like the quarterly updates, but I'm wondering if we can take maybe 30 minutes at one of our Thursday work sessions to have it done in person versus a memo.
That's the update, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, in person?
That's what everybody's talking about.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
For staff to come here.
It would be, it would be us.
After budget season.
Okay, that's fair, yes.
After budget season, thank you. After budget season.
But I just want to make sure.
I mean, I plan on, I plan on having, I try to typically have two town hall meetings a year. One's at Hardy and one's at Boone's Mill. And I will introduce this or tell them what's going on at a town hall meeting to get input there before I ever say anything. I mean, I admire you guys for what you said. If it were me, it'd be a referendum. I certainly wouldn't make that decision on my own. And it would be a referendum, and I admire y'all for saying that because I think it's smart on your part. But you can, some of this preliminary stuff, you can do and get a feel for it before it ever goes back to them. And they, they will be at your town hall meeting if you request them to be. And have a little slight presentation, and it's, that's good. I think you got your answer to that one, didn't you?
Okay, I think we have answers to everything. So we'll just run through them really quickly so we all know we're on the same page. We're good with moving forward towards that cooperative procurement route, right? Okay. We know the zoned area is boundary conversation. We'll roll that into public engagement. Quarterly updates with staff. Any other public engagement? And like I said, we can talk specific groups, how many open houses, all of that stuff later on. If you know that you want more than one, that is important to know. Each open house has a three, four dollar signs next to it. So you have two or three of those and it really grows quite quickly. So if you all know that you're happy with one overarching, that's their one opportunity to come together, sit down at those small groups. That could end up being hundreds of people if we're really, really lucky. So we might want more than one because it's a big county. But again, we're talking money. So if you all know pretty strongly you're okay with one or you know pretty strongly, nope, we're going to need at least two or three, then I think that might be worth knowing now if you're able.
Stephanie, I would like to see a list of the proposed stakeholder groups because that will help drive, if we can look over the different groups and how many of them there are, whether we need to subdivide a couple of the groups up together, piggyback them or just do singular groups. Do you all agree with that?
I think it's, I agree with what you're saying. I think it needs to go, you guys need to go back, put the proposal together and then bring it back here with suggestions at that point.
Easy enough.
Then that, I think you've got the board's consensus to go forward with it right now.
Okay, I won't ask you any more questions.
Stephanie did an outstanding job.
I won't ask any more questions.
Outstanding job.
No, you did a good job.
Oh, thank you.
Very beneficial.
Thank you for staying so long. Anything else?
Anybody, everybody clear? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, now, we will take just a short break. Your supper's back here. We're going to be 75. The meeting is still open because of a couple of things back there. But your supper's back there, getting cold. We're going to be 75.